Recording in progress.
Okay, welcome to the regular meeting this Tuesday evening, July 12th. I now call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ashley, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Williams?
Present.
Vice Chair Nutter?
Present.
Adam Nugent is, I mean Commissioner Nugent is absent. Commissioner Patel?
Present.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Present.
All right, great. Good evening and welcome. We're very happy to be here in person and also have providing options for virtual participation. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, there are three options to sign up, to speak. Complete a yellow request to speak, slip and hand it to the clerk. Or number two, sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber. Or number three, scan the QR code to sign up. The code is located on a sign at the back of the chambers. As we've all learned to do, use QR codes at restaurants in the last two years, right? If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, just press star nine to raise your hand. And when called upon, press star six to unmute yourself. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for this specific item. Okay. Ashley, will you read the consent calendar, please?
Yes, Chair Williams. Item number one, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes Approval. Approve the minutes of the regular meetings of May 24th, 2022, June 14th, 2022, and June 28th, 2022.
All right, thank you. Is there any member of the Planning Commission who would like to pull this item from the consent calendar? Okay. If any of, uh, this is not, if any members of the public wish to comment on the consent calendar item we just spoke about, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Okay?
Chair Williams, we do not have any public commentators this time?
Said no, there are not any. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the public. Pardon me? I don't think so. Do we need to vote on that? Okay, thank you. All right, I would like to take a vote on.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. All right, may I have a vote on the approval of the meeting minutes?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Approved.
Vice Chair Nutter?
Approved.
Commissioner Nugent is absent. Commissioner Patel?
Approved.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Approved.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is the public comment period. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item that is not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from taking any action on any matter that's not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. The target limit for public comment is 15 minutes. However, additional time may be provided for public comment and/or per speaker, or time per speaker may be reduced depending on the number of people that would like to speak. So again, these are public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time? Ashley, is there anyone online?
Chair Williams, we don't have any public commentators at this time.
Great, all right, thank you. So can we hear the first item, please? For our, our item for public hearing?
Yes, Chair Williams. Item number two, 415 Fairfax Avenue, new single-family residence, PA 2021-066.
Thank you. So as usual, we will start with a staff presentation, followed by an applicant presentation, and then clarifying questions from we commissioners on the, we on the Planning Commission, and then an opportunity for public comments as well. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present. Members of the public are given between two minutes or three minutes, depending on how many speakers there are. The applicant may also be given five minutes at the end to respond to the public comments. Once the public hearing is closed, the Planning Commission will deliberate and render a decision on the project. Since we probably have a number of, we have a number of attendees tonight, if you wish to speak, please complete a speaker slip and sign in or sign in using the QR code or iPad or raise your hand via Zoom. We want to create an environment where all viewpoints can be heard, so do not speak out of turn or disrupt the meeting through clapping or jeering or other public displays for or against speakers. Please also note that the Planning Commission has received and read all public comments that were submitted to the city since this application was submitted. Finally, if a decision is made tonight, the decision of the Planning Commission on this project can be appealed to the City Council within 10 calendar days. Okay. So with that, why don't we start with the staff presentation?
Thank you, Chair Williams and member over the Planning Commission. Vincent Kwan, Assistant Planner and Staff Planner for Agenda Item Two this evening. A public hearing for 415 Fairfax, PA 2021-066. The project before the commission this evening is for a single-family residence located at 415 Fairfax Avenue, highlighted here in blue.
My microphones, um, we're not seeing it on our screens. Do we need to just turn them on? We can turn around and look, I guess, but that's awkward. Give us one minute, please. It's on, or yours isn't either? Do you have something more than a light on the bottom? Should we turn around? We'll just have to turn around, yeah. Okay, we'll turn around. Yes, you can go ahead, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the project before the commission this evening is for a single-family residence located at 415 Fairfax Avenue, highlighted here in blue. This map highlights the location of the project in the Baywood residential neighborhood of San Mateo. Here's an aerial image showing the project site located in the single-family residential neighborhood. The existing residence is a two-story, 2,612 square feet, Spanish Colonial Revival architectural styled, single-family residence on a 10,558 square foot lot. The general plan's land use designation of this site is for a single-family, which is consistent with the site's zoning designation of One Family Dwelling's R1B. Moving on to the project description, the project consists of demolition of the existing residence seen here, the removal of a protected tree, and construction of a new single-family residence shown here. The proposed project is a two-story, 3,910 square foot, single-family residence with an attached 798 square foot ADU. The image shown here is the site plan of the project with the attached ADU highlighted in yellow. The front property is located on the left side of the image with an attached two-car garage. Also shown on the site plan are the protected trees indicated with the red and green highlights respectively. Here's the roadmap of the next few slides focusing on the applicable codes and policies. Staff will be, begin by covering by the local requirements, followed by the applicable entitlements and design review, and lastly, the state laws. To begin, the general plan land use designation for the project site is for single-family, which is consistent with the site's zoning designation of R1B for, for One Family Dwellings. The zoning code provides a list of development standards which are summarized here, which include floor area ratio, building height, and setbacks. As you can see, the project complies with the applicable code standards. Note, the 798 square foot ADU is not included in the floor area ratio or square footage. Next are the project's list of planning application entitlements. The first entitlement is a special use permit, or SUP, for the proposed demolition of the existing residence. The second entitlement is for the single-family dwelling design review, or SFDDR, for the proposed new single-family residence. The municipal code requires that the application for a new residence must be submitted concurrently with the SUP as application, which the applicant complies with. It should be noted, both these entitlements are approvable at staff level, but due to staff difficulty in making findings to approve the tree removal and the applicant's request for Planning Commission review, the project was elevated to the Planning Commission. As part of the SFDDR process, staff reviewed the project in conformance with the single-family dwelling design guidelines. The guidelines are meant to provide guidance on the design of a new single-family dwelling and second-story additions, including some provisions to address building size, architectural character, in relationship to the street and nearby residences. While the applicant will be presenting and providing additional detail on the design, staff wanted to highlight that the project is in conformance with the design guidelines by utilizing materials and colors which are found in the neighborhood and maintain a consistent building scale, massing, and height as other residences. Lastly, in the code and policy review are the state-level policies. The subject application is subject to both Senate Bill 330 Preliminary Application, or SB 330, and Housing Accountability Act, or HAA. The applicant submitted an SB 330 application on May 27th, 2022, after the initial application was filed. The project consisting of a single-family residence with an attached ADU is considered a housing development project. As such, this limits the, the city from conducting more than five public hearings and imposing ordinances, policies, and standards after the preliminary application is filed. Similarly, since the project is considered a housing development project, HAA applies this project, which limits the city's ability to deny, reduce density of, or render housing development projects infeasible if the project's objective standards are met. Staff has evaluated the project and finds that it meets all the applicable objective standards in the general plan and zoning code. Here's the roadmap to discuss the key issues in the following slides. Staff will begin with the historic analysis, followed by design review, and end with the protected tree removal. To begin, as part of the project review, the city's historic preservation consultant, Bridget Mally of Architecture and History, completed a Historic Resource Evaluation, or HRE, in June 2021, since the existing structure is greater than 45 years old and was not included in the city's 1989 Historic Building Survey. The HRE concluded that existing residence is not individually eligible for listing in the California Register of Historical Resources. The city's 1989 Historic Building Survey and the Office of Historic Preservation Letter identifies there may be several register-eligible residential districts in the city, one of which includes Baywood. However, a complete evaluation of eligibility, boundaries, and contributors has not yet been completed. In April 2022, a report and letter by historic consultant, Richard Brandy, was submitted to the city, which conveys the Baywood neighborhood is an eligible district and the existing residents at 415 Fairfax Avenue would be a contributor to this potential district. However, the report prepared by Mr. Brandy does not appear to be a complete analysis of the neighborhood in that it does not indicate a district boundary or identify or rank contributors to the district. To designate the neighborhood as a district would require further study and council or state action. Given the absence of a fully documented and defined Baywood district, the concerns raised regarding accumulative impact or adverse effect on the historic district, such that it will cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of a historical resource, are not justified. The focus of the city's CEQA analysis is based on whether the structure proposed to be demolished qualifies individually as a historic resource, which it does not, determined by the project's HRE and also in Mr. Brandy's report. Other issues were raised regarding the design review process and primarily pertain to the second-story placement, massing, and building height, noting these feat, design features were inconsistent with the neighborhood. While the second story is along the project's left side and over the garage, the second story provides additional setback along the project's left side. Staff also found other examples of residences with similar second-story placement and massing, including 415 Fairfax and 300 Harvard Road, seen here. Concerns were also raised about the, the proposed building height, noting the residence appears taller than other residences in the surrounding neighborhood. Staff evaluated the proposed residence building height and noted the height is similar to residences in the vicinity and within the city's maximum building height requirement of 32 feet. Furthermore, concerns were raised about the design of the residence in that proposed resident, the proposed residence is contemporary in nature and does not match the existing residence style, nor does it complement the various period revival architectural styles of the neighborhood. However, the design guidelines do not preclude any particular architectural style. While the applicant will be presenting in more detail about the design, staff evaluated the project to be compatible with the neighborhood through the utilization of materials and colors which are similar to those found in the neighborhood to further compatibility. In addition, conditions, concerns were also raised about the accessory dwelling unit, with comments noting the size and location of the ADU is proposed as a way for the homeowners to exceed the allowable floor area limitations. However, in accordance with state law and the municipal code, the initial 800 square feet of an ADU is exempt from the site's maximum floor area. Should be noted, the city's review of the ADU is ministerial and not discretionary. This precludes the city from applying the single-family design guidelines and requiring reduction in the size of the ADU. Lastly, the project includes a proposal to remove one 33-inch coast live oak tree, which is considered a protected tree, highlighted here in red, and maintain the other oak tree located on the property which is highlighted in green. The applicant's arborist report explains the removal of the tree is necessitated by the proximity of the tree to the ADU, highlighted in yellow. However, as one could see in the graphic, the tree is not located in the footprint of the ADU and the arborist report did not provide sufficient evidence to justify removal of the tree. As such, staff has included condition of approval number nine, which requires the oak tree to be preserved as part of the project. Should the applicant continue to pursue removal of the tree, the condition requires the applicant to file for a tree removal permit through the city's Parks and Recreation Department and demonstrate the construction of the ADU would be detrimental to the health of the tree. For public comments, public noticing was mailed to addresses within 500 feet radius of the project site and people who requested to be part of the interested parties list. In addition, a placard was posted at the project site, and this project was included in the planning newsletter. Staff received about 70 public comments, all of which were forwarded to the Planning Commission, and the comments varied between supporting and opposing the project. The supporting comments noting the project meets all applicable codes and would fit in the neighborhood, opposing comments mentioning the project's historic resource impacts, design review, and protected tree removal, and the ADU size. Lastly, since the existing residence is not considered a historic resource as determined by the Historic Resource Evaluation, the project is exempt from CEQA using the exemptions shown on the screen. The exceptions to the use of these categorical exemptions do not apply as the project would not result in a cumulative impact nor result in substantial adverse change in the significance of a historical resource. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the special use permit and single-family dwelling design review and accept categorical, categorical exemption from environmental review. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions. The applicant is remote this evening, but will be providing a presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So at this time, we would like to hear the applicant presentation. And they're remote, you said? Oh. Oh, great, okay. All right, great, welcome. And do you have? Will you have something on screen?
Yes, so we're going to shift to my architect, who is remote, and he has some of the staff here will present on screen.
All right, so we're going to turn our backs on you, don't be offended.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. Great, so my name is Gene Alston, I'm here with my mother-in-law, Lana McCarthy, my daughter Fiona, and my wife Nicole. My other daughter Lola is on Zoom, so thank you, sweetie, for joining us. We are the applicants of 415 Fairfax. And first off, I just want to really thank the Planning Commission for, for providing this forum. You know, I, I think it's been a long and arduous process and, you know, it's good to have an open forum where we can really talk about this project transparently. I want to thank the, the city staff. You guys have been really great working through the process, really guiding us and being really equitable throughout. So, you know, just want to really thank your involvement. So just a quick overview of how we're going to use the time. We're going to talk a little bit about the motivation for us wanting to be in Baywood. Some questions about, you know, why we want to move to Baywood, and my wife will speak to that. We've been residents of San Mateo for over 25 years. We moved, our first home was in San Mateo when we moved to the Bay Area. And, you know, so this place just really, it's, it's very personal for us to be in this community, and so we want to speak a little bit of that, to that motivation. And I also want to get to the team to present the project itself and cover those elements and answer any questions. I know we'll have time after public comment, so, but we're happy to take questions along the way. So with that, I'm going to ask my wife Nicole to come on up and say a few words.
Hi, I'm Nicole Alston. Nice to meet all of you in this forum, and, and like Gene, I want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to talk about the project. I'm just going to briefly provide a little background. As Gene said, we came to San Mateo 25 years ago and have been around the San Mateo neighborhood all of that time. We've also lived in Burlingame, but we really want to come back to San Mateo, and you might want to know why. So our first home was actually in San Mateo between Beresford Park and Hillsdale Mall, in the Hidden Parks, as we used to call them. We lived on a lovely cul-de-sac with a, a bunch of other really great families whom we're still very, very good friends with, and they still live in San Mateo. After we outgrew our home, we moved away, but we found ourselves coming back to San Mateo literally every single day. And that was because our kids were in San Mateo schools. I joined the Board of Trustees at my kid's school. I was doing a lot of community work, you know, coming back for block parties and hosting pumpkin carving parties and, and that sort of thing. And when we moved away, it was a little frustrating for Gene because I wanted to find a home in a neighborhood that was exactly like our home in San Mateo. I wanted there to be, you know, mothers and families walking on the street and people jogging in the neighborhood and sidewalks where you felt safe. And Baywood is that place for us. And so when we found the home at 415 Fairfax, it was, it was kind of a, a dream come true. We were going to come back and not have to keep driving back every single day for our kids' schools. So it's, it was, it's a great place for us. We did get the opportunity to live in the home. We love the neighborhood. We love the neighborhood because it's beautiful. We would never do anything to solely the, the appearance of the neighborhood and only want to add to the community and the beauty and can, and continue to do what we've done in Burlingame and Burlingame for, I'm sorry, in San Mateo, in Burlingame for the last 25 years. So that's a little bit about why we want to be back in, in Baywood and why we love this home and neighborhood so much. Thank you.
Great.
So I don't know, can everybody hear me okay?
I think so. Eric, you're on. Just want to introduce just the full team that's supporting us. Eric Nyas is our architect with Roberto, Lee Prince, our attorney, and we have members from several community groups, including UMB Law, supporting us in the meeting. So anyways, over to you, Eric.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Gene. And thank you, Chair Williams and Commissioners and the city staff. Again, my name is Eric Nyas with Nyas Design Group. We are the architects, and I really want to reiterate what Gene said about thanking the staff. They've been terrific in sort of navigating through this entire process judiciously, very even-handed. even-handed, with great recommendations that we're very pleased with how that all worked out. I won't reiterate a lot. I think what was great is that Vincent actually gave a lot of what I was going to speak about, so actually I can shorten mine, which is great for everybody. And I'll jump right into, you know, you know, this has been a long process, as Jean mentioned, you know, considering our first meetings, the first neighborhood meeting was 11 months ago, and the first time we reached out to the planning department was 14 months ago to get this process started. So it has been trying, it's been, you know, we've got to be very patient about this, but I think in the end, I think it'll be a great house. Interestingly, the house really hasn't changed design too much since that beginning, because the original design showed and has always shown a strong adherence to the city's guidelines. So we did make accommodations for some of the neighbor comments, some of the recommendations from the city staff, which are what you see today. So I too wanted to go through the three major components of this presentation. One was historic, the design, and then the tree removal as well. But, I mean, Vincent did a such a great job on the historic side, I'll probably skip over that entirely, because you've all read the documentation, it's not historic, the house is certainly not historic. It is, if you've been there, you've seen that the back of the house has really no correlation to the front. There's all kinds of different window systems and sizes, and it's kind of unfortunate, but it would be tough to call this historic for various reasons. As far as the design, though, you know, the design, we sort of, we talked very at length with Jean and Nicole of what style they wanted. We sort of, we manipulated it to this, where it was this transitional house with lots of this, you know, sort of New England clavering style details that made it traditional, but we needed to adapt it to the way we live today. So, and they're excited to introduce this, the charm of this design. Let's see, all while, this is all while maintaining the tradition, the traditional and coordinated window sizes and traditional massing in detail that you see in some of these homes. So, and I'll just walk through the plans very quickly here, since I didn't have to talk about the historic component here. So this is the first floor. It's really the single-story wing over here is the entry. Through the entry, you see the dining room and the sitting room with a study that's quite distant from all the other areas that would, you know, people congregate and make more noise. And this again is all single-story, and it relates very directly to 439 Fairfax, which is just down the street. Also in the fact that there are a couple other examples of this two-car garage right up at the street, just two doors down, there's a Tudor course that faces the street, and then of course 439 just up the street, four houses up the street also has the garage. In those instances, it's a large double garage door, and we sort of wanted to make the scale a little more manageable by making two individual doors here. So it's a little smaller scale in that sense. But then you walk through, you turn the corner here, and you're into this great room, which is really how people live today. And this is sort of that transitional, you know, stretch of bridging of the gap between all the new, is that we all want to be in this space in our waking hours, and then to be able to exit the house here to whatever the backyard provides. In this case, it would be a pool and some yard. And then, and then I'll get into the ADU location and why it's there in a moment. But, and then the other accommodations, sort of the mudroom, the side entry, the pantry, these are all great necessities for modern living. And then the stair up here would take you to the second floor, which again is four bedrooms effectively. There is one here that will be utilized likely as a study for the time being, but it is, could accommodate a bedroom situation. And then the two bedrooms up front here for the, for their children, that are very identical, but then work well with the front elevation, and then the master suite at the end here. So that's really the floor plan that I wanted to walk you through. And the only, the only second floor area you can see is just this area here. And we've set this back here to create a little bit of a break in what would be a longer wall along here. But that's how that got laid out. A lot of solar panels, they're looking to be very sort of efficient and energy efficient and conscientious of all that as much as possible, with other systems as well that we're contemplating for the property. And as we move forward here, here are some of the reference images that sort of help you understand how we got to where we are and what are, what are some of the influences, you know, the sidings, the grand, the more grand entries of the various, and then the colors, looking at different colors, and they ended up on this beige, which was something of a compromise. They did want it darker, and I'll get into that in a moment as well, but these are some of those examples. The bay windows here that exists over the garage, you see some of these bay, you know, with the metal standing seam roofs above, sort of here. Anyway, sort of get that feel and make it very much a modern living space. Here is, here is your 301 Jackson, which is basically up the hill at the corner, probably 10, 10 doors down. And this is probably the closest match to sort of the style that we're going for. You can see it's very sort of New England. Here they use shingles, but we would use, you know, clavering siding, and it's a darker color, that kind of, that kind of thing. And then the side elevation, which faces Fairfax, actually, which I think is, you know, has some of the similar items, including stone base, the water table and what have you, and so. And then as we move on, you know, Vincent alluded to this, this was that massing comparison, so the comments that came in about massing and it's too large for this site, I think this reflection, as Vincent said, it's really, it's basically the same height as this neighbor here and lower than the Tudor that actually sits here facing the street. So, and you can see, this is the envelope, we're well under the envelope as far as total height, and as I mentioned before, this is that single-story element, which mimics what's down the street here at 439, but what we don't have is this larger second story that's beyond, it's visible. So we're really just this front area here, and as far as proportions and dimensions, we're very similar to that, and that's what that reflects there. And as we move on, again, I'll go back to the renderings here. Some of the other design elements here are this arbor with brackets, beautiful brackets that we put over the garage door to create some depth, as well as the bay window up here, which is split windows between the two bedrooms upstairs to create these nice window seats in each, each of the bedrooms. And then of course, this strong entry feature here is another thing we're going to, the second floor over the garage, you know, it does extend on both sides here with these little brackets to give a little bit more character and detail to that. So there's some overhang there. The idea is really to break up that front, since it does face the street. The first floor, which is adjacent to 411, which is this property here, if you will, this is, you know, other than this entry here in mudroom, the rest of it really is at 10 feet setback, whereas the first floor could be five feet, which is where we located just the entry here, but the entire first floor could be at five feet, but we decided to pull it back, not only for the architecture, but, you know, being sensitive to the neighbors to the side here. And then as we move forward here, the little view of the pool area looking out the back, so I actually, you exit the house here, this is the backyard that would, that would greet you. And this is a diagram we did early on, it's, you know, the red dots, you may have seen this in the package, the red dots reflect those who made comments and submitted them, and the light blue-gray dots here are homes and properties where no comments came in. So it's really, it's 17 out of, I think it was about 100 or 110 notifications that went out, and here are what we got. So, I mean, in some senses, there are some comments, but it's relatively small to the, to the existing close community around this property. So we feel it's sort of a small amount. The other, the other item I'll show here quickly is that, is a layout of the different homes. I know we're running out of time, so I'll try and be as quick as possible, but when the comments came in about this house being too large, the reality is, what this study showed, and we didn't hire an auditing firm, you know, full disclosure, this was really about information that was readily available on real estate sites, and we took all those that made comments, in particular, we started with that, and we said, well, let's compare all the homes, and the reality is, the critical one is the FAR here, all the way to the right. These are lot sizes of house floor areas, but the critical one is, is the whole idea of the size of the house on the property that it's given. And if you see here, our FAR is 32.58, so we're only 5% larger than the smallest home of this group, and yet we're 15% smaller as an FAR standard from the largest home. I think that's very telling. And then I'll turn it over to Mike Callen briefly here, I know we're running out of time, but he's going to mention a few things about...
We have a couple of minutes left.
Yep. Go ahead, Mike. If Mike, I don't know if his audio is on, he's the landscape architect, Mike Callen? Maybe I'll wait, since we're running out of time, I'll wait till he is muted. Mike, if you get unmuted, just holler, or cut me off. Also wanted to show this as it relates to the ADU. So here, I'm going back to the ADU. These dark dash lines here are other locations that we considered for the ADU, but as you can see, if it's in this corner here, which would put it four feet off of each property line, which is also less sensitive, we want to be sensitive to the neighbors here, it would also impact this tree and the large oak. So now we're talking about two trees that would be severely impacted, and so that's why we connected it to the house here, not only giving 10 feet to the side neighbor, but over 12, almost 13 feet to the rear neighbor here, again, trying to be as sensitive as possible. And then the other alternative, of course, was here, you wouldn't put it right in the middle of your yard, it would just eat up your yard, but the other alternative was here, but then again, you're taking out two trees or impacting two trees greatly. So that's why its current location really only impacts this oak tree. Mike, if you're unmuted, I can let you jump in here?
I think...
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're just about a minute or two left.
Sorry about that. I'll just be really quick. Thanks so much, board members. My name's Mike Callen, I'm actually a landscape architect from San Mateo. I've been born and raised in San Mateo, I live over by Burrell Middle School. So as far as looking at, there is the 33-inch oak tree that we have proposed for removal. We are putting in a total of 27 new 36-inch box trees, and that's for privacy around the rear and the side of the property.
Okay, great, thank you. I think that was over 15 minutes, is that right, Mary? Yeah. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome, thank you. From Fairfax to the house. So...
Okay.
I'm up with any questions you might have.
Well, at this time, I think that we appreciate the presentation from all the applicants, including the architect and landscape architect as well. So at this time, I think I'd like to see if there are any clarifying questions from the Planning Commission, just to be sure we're understanding things, so.
Through the chair, I have some questions.
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. I have three questions for staff, and then I have two questions for applicant. I was wondering if the staff could just remind us how exactly the Housing Accountability Act limits local agencies to deny, reduce the density of, or render housing development projects infeasible if objective standards are met?
Through the chair.
Sorry, I know you, I know there was like a line on the slide, but if you could go into more detail about what we can or cannot ask the applicant to do, can we ask them to make the house smaller or shorter, for example?
Sure. So through the chair, Rendell Busto, senior planner, happy to start us off, and then I'll let others add, but sure, as noted in the staff report and in the presentation, the project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act, HAA, in that it produces one single-family unit and an accessory dwelling unit. It does limit the city's ability to, as stated, deny or reduce the density of the project. Staff has analyzed the project and found that it does meet objective standards, so unless others can confirm, I don't believe the commission is able to require the reduction in floor area in that it, you know, meets objective standards.
Great, thank you. Is our protected tree ordinance considered an objective standard?
There are objective standards contained within the ordinance itself, however, the request to remove a protected tree is a discretionary action, and so this planning application, you know, does not authorize removal of that tree. In fact, we impose a condition to require preservation. The applicant, should they propose to request removal at a later stage, is required to apply for a tree removal permit through the Parks and Rec Department, which is a discretionary action.
Okay, thank you so much. That's very helpful. What is the process to establish a historic district? You had mentioned it would require a more extended review and possibly city council action, and so is that something we, as the Planning Commission, would have the authority to do at this meeting tonight?
Through the chair, I'll take a stab at responding that, Manira Senthier, planning manager. So typically, to designate a neighborhood as a historic district, there are two paths that can be pursued. One is the neighborhood itself, applying either to the jurisdiction or to the state to be listed as a historic district. The other is through city council action, where the city council can initiate a study to evaluate the eligibility of a potential historic district. So those are typically the paths, the Planning Commission, my understanding is, does not have the authority to designate a historic district. That has to be done through substantial evidence in the record, a complete historic analysis and evaluation that, as Vincent pointed out earlier, identifies boundaries, specific individual contributors, as well as non-individually eligible contributors, and ranks them so that the district is fully documented.
Great, and then that would require council action to then act upon, is that correct?
Possibly, either council action or the neighborhood group could apply to, like the state, the state's historic preservation office.
Okay, so it would require either state action or council action. So as of today, the neighborhood is not, has not gone through either of those two paths, and either of those two actions have not been taken.
That is correct.
So my last question, the applicant has submitted a application through SB 330, which means that the city cannot oppose additional guidelines or requirements or change the zoning standards after the submission of that application, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Those are all my questions for staff, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Two questions for the applicant, if that's okay? Great. I'm curious to know what changes you made to your design, if any, to incorporate feedback from the community.
Yes, I'm happy to go through those. In fact, a couple of rendering here again. So one of the, one of the first ones, there's about five of them, first one was the pink color, which changed to a much lighter tone. It was originally very dark, or much darker, and it's now it's more in those earthy tans and beiges that you see in more of the surrounding homes. Number two, the Mullians were added. Before there were no Mullians, it was clear glass, and it was, you know, it's a more contemporary approach, but we were happy to put the Mullians in, it's not a problem. The other one was the side, the side here had a portico over it, so that when you stood in the rain, you wouldn't get rained on, but I think the staff felt that it was imposing into that, the building envelope a little too much, so we removed that. Second floor windows up here along this wall, what we did is we, you know, the neighbor here, 411, was concerned about how many windows, proximity, so we actually, based on the city staff's recommendation, we adjusted some of those to that they didn't align across from the neighbors, number one, and then we removed two of them from the primary bedroom at the back and removed a single one here, it was a triple before, and it's double now, so we removed them there. And then the last one was, the tree in the front was added, and I'll zip to the front here really quickly, pardon my skip there, but this, a tree of some sort was going to be put here to help screen the house, because they felt that it was suddenly too exposed, and that was a concern from neighbors, so we were happily added that tree.
Thank you, that was super helpful, and now I have one follow-up question based on what you just said. I'm trying to look at my own pictures. You mentioned that some windows were removed from the side of the second story that faces 411 Fairfax. Does the existing residence have windows on that, on that elevation?
Yeah, here's the elevation. So there were two here that are about in the same places, the prime, this is the primary bedroom here.
Okay.
So there were two there, and this is actually, you can see how this relates. This actually ended up being five feet further over than it currently is, it may not be aligned perfectly vertically, but what happened is, this is, you can see the dash line of the existing house there, that's what this represents right here, this dash line. So you can see, it's only a couple feet beyond there, and then up here, this was the front of the house, so we're only that much further forward currently, but these are the added windows.
Got it. So it's roughly the same number of windows, but the locations might not line up on the second story, the locations might not line up quite exactly the same.
Correct. We shifted a few of these, just so they wouldn't align across the properties. That was a request as well, so that, you know, effectively someone couldn't look into someone else's yard or house, but these are new windows relative to the old house, if you will.
Great, thank you. And then one last question is a landscape question, and this is very in the weeds, so I apologize, but the evergreen privacy trees on your landscape plan, have you thought yet about what species that might be?
I actually show them as Grecian laurel trees, so they're evergreen. I use those on my own house, they're fast-growing, disease-resistant, drought-tolerant, and they should do well under the canopy. I do have some of those under the canopy of the large oak to remain, number four, that's in the south corner of the lot.
Great. Do you know what height those typically grow to when mature?
It's probably about 25 feet at around maximum height. I try to get it so it doesn't shade properties, properties too much, but, and you can, it's more of an oval canopy to them, so you can shape them, so it's not like a red... so you can shape them so it's not like a redwood tree that would look weird if we tried to top them. So it would, you know, at time of planting, it's probably about 14 feet tall at time of planting.
Great, that was my next question. I thought I had read on your plan that there's 27 36-inch box trees, but I thought I must not have understood correctly because that's quite a lot of 36-inch box trees.
That's what he said.
And so again, this is super in the weeds, and I'm looking at Commissioner Wiggins here because I feel like you might know the answer to this question too. But I have heard from landscape architects in the past that there is a risk benefit that happens when you select trees that large, that going with like a 15-gallon or a 24-inch box makes it more likely that the tree will take because it can establish the root system natively in the ground. But then obviously, the benefit of the 36-inch box is that it's taller when you plant it. And so I'm curious to hear what the implications of the larger box tree might be with how they're spaced, because I also know you have to dig quite a large hole for the bulb system when you plant. So I guess what I'm asking is-
That's a really good question.
What motivated the decision for the 36-inch as opposed to like a 24-inch?
I usually try not to go above 36-inch. When you start going to 48 inches or above, that's when you do get the roots that kind of grow in because they've been in that box for so long. So in this case, along the property lines, what they basically do is do like a trough along there to put the trees in. And I think the important thing is when we're ordering trees is to make sure that, you know, they, a lot of times if they have, if they're root bound like that, that you can actually tell. We'll take pictures of all the trees for us so we can tell if it looks like it's all compacted down. And then you're right, the trees won't do as well. But proper nurseries will have it, that they'll bring in new soil mixtures each time that they're bringing it to the next size box. So I think we should be fine with that, especially if these trees are a lot more resilient than some other ones that might be stunted.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Those are all of my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. Commissioner Ebner, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Through the chair. I do not have any questions at this time for the applicant, but I do for staff. So I know, Randall, you had spoke at a public meeting recently or a video of a meeting recently on this project. And you had mentioned that over the five years that you've been with the city, I think only two residential properties have been brought to the Planning Commission for review. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes. So between the period, I think, of '27 to date, this is the third single-family project that's been before the Planning Commission.
So it's quite a unique situation to get it to this level.
Through the chair, yes. The zoning code does authorize the zoning administrator to approve single-family projects, second-story additions, new homes, demolitions of existing homes. A bulk of our applications here at the city are single-family, and, you know, obviously, a great number of them are approved at the staff level. Given the complexity, the public controversy, and the difficulty in making the findings to approve the tree removal, staff and the applicant agree that it'd be appropriate to bring it before the commission.
Great, thank you. So in the Baywood neighborhood, have there been other locations that have proposed complete demo of their projects with a rebuild, and have they been approved?
Through the chair, there, I have a list here. So there is an existing, now existing home at 558 Edinburgh that was approved for demolition in 2016. So now that replacement home is built, and that was approved by the zoning administrator. Most recently, there was a project at 539 Fairfax that, in the same way, proposed demolition of existing home and replacement new home. That was applied for in January 2022 and applied and approved in April of the same year and currently in review at 445 Virginia, same project scope, removing existing home and proposing a replacement home. That project is still in review, and that was filed in March of 2021. All three of these addresses had historic resource evaluations prepared for the project, and none were deemed individually eligible.
So there hasn't been substantial public pushback on the projects?
None of them were appealed or brought before the Planning Commission, so no public controversy was elevated to the level that this application was.
Okay. One question about the tree permit. If in fact, that is a route that the applicant needs to go. Does the permit process run concurrently with the building permit process? Or does one have to be approved prior to the other? I'm thinking about longevity. I hate to see, you know, confusion as that process may go through.
Yes, through the chair. So the conditions of approval do require that in the event the applicant does move forward with a tree removal, specifically tree number one, that that tree removal permit be issued prior to issuance of the building permit?
Okay. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wiggins, do you have any comments, questions?
Yes, through the chair. I think these are mostly for staff. Just one question I put at the top. I think I read in the staff report that the application was made in October 2021. Did I hear a reference in staff's presentation tonight to an application that was made in May of '22? Did I understand that right or no?
Through the chair, I believe that was in reference to the SB 330 preliminary application. That was filed later on, so later on in the year.
Okay, that's the May 2022 is the SB 330?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And for staff, I understand there was a tree removal permit that was denied by the arborist. Is that correct? And do you know the reason for the denial?
Through the chair, I don't have the precise reason for its denial. Again, it is a discretionary action, and that was, you know, reviewed and denied by the city's Parks and Recreation Department at the staff level. That was applied for prior to the application of this subject, SFTDR and SUP. So again, if they move forward with the removal, they would have to revive and reapply for that application to remove the tree. And in addition, there would be a series of information as outlined in Condition of Approval 9, that the original application, which was denied, I would assume was not provided.
Okay. This one is for staff unless the applicant wants to answer. If the, so the Condition 9 is not authorizing the removal of tree number one, but it provides a pathway to do so. If the, if that, if the applicant continues to pursue the removal and it's denied, Condition 9 says that the plans will be revised. If that happens, plans are revised. Does it come back to us to look at it again? Or they just change it as they need to? Or are we just talking about changing a note, and there's not any real change to the design?
Through the chair, in some instances, revisions to plans can be made through a building permit stage. Unless the modification, you know, changes the site plan, the floor area, the design, staff has the ability to bring it back to the commission. Staff does not anticipate that preservation of the tree would require another action by the Planning Commission to likely, you know, request revision to the building permit.
Okay. Let me ask one more follow-up that is probably better for the landscape architect. The, if I'm reading the grading plans right, in the vicinity of that oak, the finished grade is coming down about one foot. Is that correct, Mr. Callen?
You're correct, yes. So there'd need to be like a little seat wall or something that would have to happen there.
And so you would continue to hold grade down? Or would you, if you kept the tree, would you change the grading plan?
I think, like you said, it kind of slopes down towards where the door is there. So we'd need to do some excavation so we can get egress into the unit right there. But other than that, it would be more, I would assume it would be more of like a pathway.
That's it for the tree line of questions. Let me see. That's, and I think Commissioner Patel kind of covered the other things that I had. Yeah, no, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have one or two questions. I think one of them might have been answered. And I also just want to note that our screens keep going on and off. So sometimes we're looking at the screen, and then other times we have to turn around. So if we seem kind of confused, that's why. We're not confused, we're just having to switch. So my question was for staff. So there was this 1989 study that, on the neighborhood, I mean, yeah, this historical neighborhood study. And I just wanted to clarify, why did that not go any further? And what would be the steps to have it have gone further and deemed the neighborhood as a historic district? Would that be a question for-
Yeah, I can start. So the, my understanding is that when the 1989 study was completed, there were two districts that were designated as historic districts. One was the downtown, and one was the Gleisenwood District in the city. And that was done through a city council resolution. At the time, the Baywood neighborhood was identified as a potential historic district. However, it was in pursuit. The full evaluation was not completed at the time.
Okay, so it potentially could have continued on as a process?
That is correct. My understanding is that at the time, the neighborhood was not interested in pursuing that option.
Okay, so it would take some action on the part of the neighborhood in order to be deemed historic?
It could come at city council direction as well. And of course, it could also come at the behest of the Neighborhood Association.
Okay. Thank you. I have one other question. Let me, do you want to go ahead? Do you have another question about the tree? I'm not sure if- So the tree is proposed to be removed because of the adjacent ADU, that portion of the new building. And does the fact that it's an ADU have any bearing on whether or not it needs, it must, whether or not it needs to be removed? Or, I guess this is, I'm not sure if this is a question for staff. Does that have any bearing on whether or not it's a, it needs to be removed? Or is it being removed because of the proximity to the structure? I mean, are they proposing removing it?
Yeah, so the, through the chair, the plans do show removal of tree number one. And the arborist report does state that the ADU necessitates removal. In reviewing that, the plans and the arborist report, staff does not believe that justification, adequate justification has been made, you know, to require the removal of the tree. It's not within the footprint. It is adjacent to the accessory dwelling unit. And staff believes that there is a path forward to not only, you know, move forward with the ADU, but also preserve the tree by designing the foundation of the ADU in such a way that it protects the roots of the tree.
So then, can staff make any recommendations regarding an ADU in terms of reduction in size or moving like an offset in that long side elevation? Is that, is staff able to do that, considering that that portion of the building is the ADU?
Through the chair, I think staff is able to recommend, you know, revisions to the ADU, but there are objective standards that apply to accessory dwelling units. And in fact, they're to be approved in a ministerial fashion. So I think the city can recommend revisions to the ADU, but cannot require it.
They cannot require, okay. Okay.
If I can add through the chair, so the ADU requirements at the state level are very prescriptive. And staff or the city cannot require redesign of the ADU to save the tree. However, as Randall pointed out, you know, there's not enough evidence in the record that the tree removal is required to build the ADU. Therefore, the condition has been added that requires preservation of the tree unless a tree removal permit is obtained.
All right, thank you. I think that clarifies things. Okay, if there are no further questions, are there? Oh, okay.
Through the chair, I do have one question. And first of all, I wanted to- First of all, I wanted to state that I have spoken with the architect, the applicant. I visited the site a couple of times, and I did interact with a couple of neighbors when I was on site. Part of the discussion that I had today with the architect was about the tree mitigation on how to avoid damage and keeping the tree alive. And we had talked about coring for piers and using steel frames in lieu of doing a perimeter foundation, which the architect was able to tell me that they're open to looking at different solutions to see if they could actually save the tree. And that was an encouraging thing to me. So hopefully, that can occur. But I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that I had other discussions with parties in this.
Thank you for letting us know that.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, if there are no further questions from commissioners to clarify things, we can move on to the public comment period. So do, how many speakers do we have at this time? Actually, I guess we could take a show of hands from the, or maybe you know how many people we have signed up to speak at this time.
Chair Williams, right now, we have four in-person speakers and- and seven via Zoom.
Four and seven, okay. So, oh, it looks like we have another one. So I suggest that we do, oh, looks, here's more. So now we have about seven, I think, is that right? In person and seven. So I suggest we do no more than two minutes per person, given the number of speakers. You mean a break right now?
No.
Excuse me, through the chair. I don't believe it's appropriate at this time to have conversations directly with members of the public.
Yeah, I think that it's important to keep to two minutes per speaker because we have probably 15 or more speakers. And we want to be sure, I think the reason, I guess I should reiterate. The reason I want to keep to a set number of minutes is because oftentimes what happens is we get somebody else that wants to speak as we go along. And I want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to speak. So it's also, if there's, you know, it's also perfectly fine to say, I agree with, you know, Speaker so-and-so, so that we, without necessarily repeating things. Okay, so we'll, you guys can let us know when you're ready to get started.
Yeah, so Chair Williams, right now, there are 22 public commentators. But I just wanted to ask everyone via Zoom, if you want to comment,
I guess these are wireless. They keep coming in and out, these screens.
Chair Williams, we have 23 speakers in total. Chair Williams, we have 23 speakers in total.
All right, great. Well, let's get started. Can we have the first? And are we doing in-person first or Zoom?
Yes, Chair Williams, in-person first and then Zoom.
Great, all right, let's get started. May we have the first speaker?
Our first speaker is Ken Abreu. Ken, you can come up to the microphone.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. I'm Ken Abreu, roughly a 40-year resident of San Mateo. I mean, bottom line is, I would like to see you approve this. And I think it's very important to improve it and strongly approve it. It's for two primary reasons. One is, we need more housing. And this particular project includes an ADU. And that is an important precedent to set and get these things built. So that's reason number one. Reason number two is very important to show meaningful progress in trying to overcome the past discrimination that we've had in our country and in our city. This is another thing that we can do by approving this, and would be very detrimental if we did not approve it. So those two things, I think, are the reasons for moving ahead and improving this, and improving it strongly to send a clear message. I know that lots of people were objecting to it for reasons of architecture and fit and so forth. But I think that the staff has done a real thorough job on, on looking at the historical issue, looking at the architectural issue. Different people can have different opinions on that. And not everybody's always going to agree. But what we deserve is a thorough and professional look at that. They've done that, and they've, I think, come to the proper decision. So I would say, let's move forward, and let's move forward in a positive way. Let's, let's welcome these folks back to San Mateo. We don't want them staying in Burlingame or wherever they are now. And let's, let's have the neighbors, I would hope, in that area, come on over and warmly greet them in a proper San Mateo way. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Barbara Pavizio. Barbara, you can come up to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Barbara Pavačić. I've been living here for 30 years. And I'm going to be quick because I agree with everything Ken said. I think it's really important that the Housing Accountability Act exists. I live on the west side, and I think we need higher density on the west side. And a wonderful way to do this are these ADUs. And I am totally supportive. I think it's wonderful. And I know everyone has their own idea about housing, but this is a beautiful home. It's going to look lovely in the neighborhood, and I say, welcome, welcome. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Our next speaker is Dave Cohen. Dave, you can come up to the microphone.
Thank you very much for, for the time. I'm Dave Cohen. Own 460 Fairfax Avenue. First of all, I want to state that you're going to be very welcome in our neighborhood. It is a very family-friendly, sounds like our big block parties are going to have some new participants. However, I do object to the style of the home that is being, is being remodeled, taken down for. We remodeled our house in 2017. And we're put through the wringer to make sure that our, our remodeling fit the nature of the home that was already there. We had to change the plans for a couple of windows that only one neighbor could see because it didn't match the other windows. We had to go through a second neighborhood meeting because we wanted to extend laterally a balcony that could not be seen from the front of the house at all, and actually only by one neighbor, by six feet. We were told we needed to keep in track in the same kinds of elements of our 1936-built home. All little bits and pieces and grasping at straws about trees and setbacks and, you know, sequin and everything else. We've got historic, factually a historical area. Factually, our houses are historic. They're 1933, 1936, all right? The city didn't follow through when they should have. I think that all we were asking for is to make the front of the house and some of the elements more match what's coming down. An ADU can be added, that's great. Again, but let's bring some architectural features in that somewhat mimic what is already there. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Jeff Kotowitz. Jeff, you can come up to the microphone.
Yes, hi, Jeff Kotowitz. I actually, my wife and I currently live at 411 Fairfax, so along the fence line. And I guess I was hoping to use this opportunity to ask a couple of quick questions around the landscaping that runs along the fence. And maybe this is for Mike Callen. Chairman Patel addressed some of them. But what is the height of the-
However, I don't think that we are to have a dialogue with the applicants at this time. It's your chance to provide your comments to the public and to the commission.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my comment is, is that we live next door to the, to the, to the property. We appreciate the fact that it's being landscaped in. But I just don't know what is coming relative to maintenance around the trees that's going to run all along our, our fence line. I think they said of 25 feet. What does that mean relative to our property and growing over? So that's really what my comments are, is just, it's a bit unknown around that.
I think, I think that's a comment that we can take in and can be addressed, you know, separately later by the applicant.
Okay, I would appreciate more information around what does it all mean relative to the, to the landscaping around the property.
Okay, do you have any other comments at this time, though?
No, I mean, I think things have been addressed. I find it a bit disingenuous when the size of the house is discussed without the ADU, relative to what the landscaper was saying. To call it a 3,900-square-foot home relative to the houses in the neighborhood, it's a 4,700-foot home, but I, I understand that, you know, that there's this provisions around the ADU. So I just find that a little deceiving and disingenuous relative to the size of the other houses. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Noted. So who's our next speaker?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Mike Etheridge. Mike, you can come up to the microphone.
Chair Williams, and esteemed commissioners. My name's Mike Etheridge. I've lived in San Mateo for over 20 years. Most recently, the last 17 years in the Aragon neighborhood. I have previously provided a written comment on this agenda topic. I just have a few items to add here tonight. First is, I want to reiterate the point I made, my written comments, that I've known Jean and Nicole for over 20 years. And I'm incredibly excited to have them back in San Mateo, as we all should be. They will be incredible additions to the city and to the Baywood neighborhood. So despite this unusual escalation to the planning committee on a residential construction project, I just want to reiterate how highly I think of the Alstons. The second thing is, I want to specifically voice my support for the plans that they have laid out and shared with us tonight. I am very familiar with that street and the surrounding area. I have a number of friends. My kids went to Baywood Elementary. So I'm very familiar with that specific block. My personal belief is that the architectural plans that have been shared show a home that does fit into that community. Not every home is Spanish colonial in Baywood neighborhood. But I do note it is quite a change from the existing residents. But I think the Alstons have made a number of changes that they shared to accommodate the feedback. The other thing I'll say, the landscaping plans for Michael Callen look beautiful. But I am especially gratified to see the condition added, protecting the live oak tree, if it can, coexist with the proposed ADU. I hope that that is the case. We recently had landscaping at our home, and we worked really hard to save all the trees, except the bottlebrush tree. We got rid of that. I hate bottlebrush trees. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who's the next speaker? Ashley?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Steve McKay. Steve, you can come up to the microphone.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi. We live, my family lives at 422 Perry Drive. We're directly behind 415 Fairfax. Very heavily impacted, obviously, by this project. Very negatively impacted by this project. I want to mirror the other comments, thanking you guys. Vincent, the staff has been amazing in this process. Super impressed with what I've seen tonight. And I'm very confident that this is all being very carefully and professionally considered. So I thank that. Thank you for that. Alstons also look forward to welcoming you to the neighborhood. I wish it was under different circumstances. I had a few points. I actually just want to make a plea. My plea would be for, we understand why you want to move to Baywood, obviously. We've lived there for decades of our lives. We had a major project, and our architect was a member of the community and really insisted on us taking the time to invest in preserving the architectural integrity, not only of the house, the historical importance of our house in the neighborhood. And that was the guiding star that he sent us down. This project is being treated, I believe, it feels like a real estate development project. We are taking an existing home that is totally preservable, and we are destroying it. And we're replacing that, you saw the numbers, within one square foot of the maximum allowable house in that space. That's not enough. Then we need to add an ADU and exploit the loophole that allows for an ADU that should be for affordable housing, not for a family that has a team of lawyers and architects that are pushing this project through the system. So this is why it's so controversial, because it harms us very directly. And I wish you would, I wish you would reject it. If you don't, my one request would be, you hired a fantastic, on-your-team landscape architect. We would love to have the opportunity to work with him and to have our voices heard in terms of how we put privacy between our homes. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Who do we have next? Ashley?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Carl Eldridge. Carl, can you come up to the microphone?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Carol Eldridge. And I am the vice chair of One San Mateo, a community group that was formed to promote racial and economic equity in the city of San Mateo, mainly through our advocacy for affordable housing and renter protections. I heard of the controversy surrounding this project. And one of the things I heard is that a classic Spanish home would be taken down, and something modern would be built in its place. So this weekend, I printed out the meeting packet. And when I saw the rendering for this home, I was like startled and even a bit mystified. I expected to see, you know, sleek horizontal lines and, you know, vast planes of, panes of glass. What I saw was actually a very traditional home. And in my estimation, it fits very nicely into the Baywood neighborhood. I drove through the neighborhood again last night. Then I went on to read the staff report. And when I saw that there have been other demolition applications and that none of them have attracted the pushback that this one has, I came to feel that the situation has a very bad look and feel to it. In any event, I am here tonight on behalf of One San Mateo to say that we regret the concerted pushback that this application has received. The city aspires to being welcoming and inclusive. And many of us covet the idea that it is. So we want the family to know that there are plenty of us in the community who welcome them and cheer them on in their effort to build their dream home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Adam Lorraine. Adam, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name's Adam Lorraine. I happen to be a sustainability and infrastructure commissioner with the city of San Mateo. But my comments tonight are those of myself as a private resident. I just wanted to stand in support of this family and their architect applying to build a family home under our current laws, objective standards, and guidelines. It must not be denied because of the subjective vision of some neighbors for this home may not match the vision of this family and their applicant for what will be their home in San Mateo. Especially when it comes to the ADU. As was described in the staff report and the discussion so far tonight, there are objective standards that, if met, need to be approved. These laws were meant to make it easier to build additional housing opportunities. And our city has a significant housing crisis. We'll be needing as many ADUs as we can get. There must not be a chilling effect on applicants interested in building ADUs, regardless of the neighborhood in which they wish to build them. I can appreciate an appreciation for the history of San Mateo and for one's neighborhood. But I wouldn't want to see the potential for historical protection to be used to dissuade people from building family homes and housing opportunities in San Mateo for the present and future of families. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next speaker?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Diane Whitaker. Diane, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening. I'm Diane Whitaker, a North Central resident. I spent nine years on the San Mateo Planning Commission, and I'm a California licensed architect. Current thinking in the practice of architecture tells us that the most sustainable building solution is to reuse an existing structure. Nearly 33 years ago, the 1890, 1989 City of San Mateo Historic Building Survey Final Report identified several residential neighborhoods west of El Camino Real. Baywood, Baywood Knolls, Aragon, and San Mateo Park as worthy of historic district designation, eligible for placement on the state and/or national historic registry pending further study, application, submittal, and approval. Despite many requests by myself and others at annual city council goal-setting workshops to undertake further studies on historic resources, this has not been done. The Baywood neighborhood is unique in San Mateo with its tree-lined, curving streets and homes of exceptional character, craftsmanship, and cohesiveness. Two architectural historians have reviewed the proposed project. While both agree the Baywood neighborhood is worthy of historic district designation, they disagree on the historic designation for the individual home. The home at 415 Fairfax Avenue may not be individually eligible, but it is a contributor to a potential historic neighborhood. If too many individual contributors are lost, you no longer have a historic district. Your decision tonight will become a watershed moment. Either San Mateo will lose many more potentially valuable historic structures, homes, and districts with their unique and distinctive character, or not. Please vote to deny this proposed demolition of a significant part of San Mateo history. I will end the words with, with a song from Joni Mitchell, a 1970 song, quote, "That you don't know what you got till it's gone." Thank you. Good to see familiar faces.
Thanks for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Keith Weber. Keith, you can come up to the microphone.
Members of the planning commission, before I start my two minutes, I would like to clarify Chair Williams' question about the 1989 survey. I was a volunteer on- I was a volunteer on that survey. And the city was intending to do an entire citywide survey, but it soon became apparent that there was not enough money. And so what they decided to do, the consultant, the State Office of Historic Preservation in the city, they decided to concentrate that survey on downtown and the east side of El Camino, precisely because those were the neighborhoods and those were the historic structures under threat of demolition. At the time, west of El Camino, single-family houses were not threatened by state law, were not threatened by constant demolitions. There was lots of preservation and respect for these homes in the Historic District. So thank you. And also, as Diane Whitaker said, we have pleaded with the city council multiple times over many years, and they have refused to move forward. So thank you. Okay, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Keith Weber. I'm a 40-year resident of San Mateo. And for years, it has been common practice for the city to have its consultants in attendance at public hearings to answer questions from the commission and the public, particularly when the project is controversial, such as this evening. It appears that the city's preservation consultant and the city's managing arborist are not in attendance tonight. There are several questions I would like to read into the record, three for the historic consultant, who is not here, and three for the city arborist, who is not here. First, has planning staff asked their historic preservation consultant to review and comment on the March 25th Brandy Report and April 4th Brandy Letter? Two, has planning staff asked their historic preservation consultant directly whether or not they concur with the findings in the Brandy Report and Letter? And in light of the Brandy findings, has the planning staff
Through the chair.
...asked their historic preservation consultant to update the historic resource evaluation to include evaluation of the subject property
Excuse me.
...as a contributor to the National Register Eligible District?
Mary, could we get a time check, please? I know that you were taking
We've exceeded the time, through the chair.
Okay.
Chair Williams, the two-minute timer is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking at my screen.
It's been up for about a minute.
Or wasn't looking behind me. Yeah, I think your time is up. Thank you.
Yes. And I have a two-minute presentation, and the clock started running beforehand when I was answering your question.
I had asked the question, though, to staff. So I appreciate your information to the question, but I think that we'll have to allow the rest of the people.
I will wind up with one final comment, that I would request that the commission consider continuing this item until such time as we can have our consultants present to answer questions from the
Okay. Noted. Thank you. Okay. Next speaker. I just want to make sure that we allow everyone equitable time and the opportunity to speak. Everyone that wants to speak has the opportunity to speak. So let's go on to the next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Lori Heater. Lori, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I am Lori Heater, and I'm a 40-year resident of San Mateo. And I'm within 500 feet of the project, and we would love to have the Alstons in the neighborhood. My issue is that I've been an environmental consultant for 40 years, conducting CEQA review for cities, state, federal agencies. I understand CEQA very well. I understand historic preservation very well. And there are a number of issues with this project. It's a very complicated project because there are so many issues, and I hope you have time to read my 12-page letter where I identify some issues. My concern is that the city is not exactly following CEQA. There have been several comments about how a Historic District is created, what constitutes an Historic District. And I think the key point that the staff has missed is that it doesn't have to be the formal report according to the state standards. It doesn't have to be submitted. We have substantial evidence presented in the Brandy Report. And that's an important CEQA term. The other thing I want to point out is that you have ministerial and discretionary projects, so you must address the whole of the project. Our attorney, Rachel Mansfield Howlett, submitted a letter about this. So it is inappropriate under CEQA to allow a future permit to take out the tree because it's depriving us of an opportunity to comment, and you're not addressing the whole of the project when you approve the project, if you have a later discretionary permit. So I echo Diane Whitaker's comments about the historic nature. It may not be everybody's cup of tea, but there are state laws and federal laws about protecting historic resources. So I would hope you would not approve this project because it doesn't comply. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Laura Watanuki. Lori, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lori Watanuki, and I'm speaking as an individual. Please protect the heritage trees. The project is not consistent with the Protected Tree Ordinance. The Arborist Report is flawed. Assessment of Oak Tree Number One for Preservation is not based on the health of the tree, but the proximity to the construction of the ADU. The impact analysis is incomplete because it does not address all the impacts of the Protected Heritage Oak Tree Number Four. Oak Tree Number Four will be damaged by the installation of 36-inch box trees, the three-foot retaining wall, and the new comprehensive irrigation. Oak Tree Four will be affected by construction because of the intrusions in the tree protection zone. A major pruning permit is required for project construction that will cut roots in Tree Number Four for the installation of the trees and the retaining wall. The project does not meet the criteria for tree removal. Condition: The trees are in good condition. Danger: The trees are not endangered to the people or property. Interference: The trees do not interfere with existing structures or utility services. It is not necessary to remove trees for reasonable economic enjoyment. The home and the ADU could be reconfigured to meet objectives. Erosion and soil retention: The effect of tree removal on erosion and soil retention has not been addressed. We will turn in three documents for further impacts on the tree protection zone. Please reject the Arborist Report and deny the project tonight. We'd like to see this get further studied and analyzed. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Randy Heater. Randy, you can come up to the microphone.
Members of the Planning Commission and staff, thanks so much for all the work and effort that you put in. We really appreciate it. We met John Abner Friday. You do this for free. We really appreciate your effort here. Simple points. Baywood's an Historic District. The home is a contributor. A CEQA EIR needs to be performed to look at different options as to how to accommodate the needs of the Alstons. Another aspect is that 415 Fairfax is art. We need to preserve, protect, and enhance and conserve those resources. Pre-war homes in these neighborhoods, once they're gone, they're gone. They're made with true dimensional lumber. That means a 2x4 is a real 2x4, not a 1 1/2 inch by 3 1/2 inch piece of wood. The walls are lath and plaster. There's handcrafted beams. You've got different hardware that is of a different metal content than the hardware that's produced today. When that's gone, that's gone. You've got hand-formed barrel tiles. That's art. It needs to be preserved. There are people that are desperate for pre-war homes. They will do anything to protect and enhance them. So let's not destroy, demolish, increase the pollution, and resource consumption by demolishing the house and creating a brand-new one. There should be a very high bar to destroying any contributor home to an Historic District. Finally, a couple other comments. 301 Jackson is an improvement in the neighborhood, but that replaced a non-contributor in the neighborhood. So that's a big distinction between this project and 301 Jackson. And finally, we love ADUs when they're done right. My neighbor, Mr. Kidwell, next to me, converted his garage. It's beautiful. It can be done. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, who do we have next?
Chair Williams, our last in-person speaker is Ron Whiteside. Ron, you can come up to the microphone.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Ron Whiteside. I live at 250 Harvard Road, and I've been living there since 1981. We oppose the demolition of this house. It is a Historic District, and I don't know how many of you on the commission actually live in Baywood District, not the area, not Baywood Knolls. We're talking about Baywood District. It's a historic site. The issue with the ADU I have is because it is not for housing, additional housing for the house that's being built. The demolition, it is for use for other families to use in terms of for housing, not a square footage to the existing house, and they want to build the demolition. And I think we should preserve the area as it has been preserved over all these years. If it's so important for someone to move to Baywood because of this area and because of its value to San Mateo, it seems quite odd that you'd want to turn around and make it something different than what is already existing within the district. For the rest of my time, I'd like to have it turned over to Keith Weber so he can finish saying what he wanted to say. Thank you.
I don't know that I, thank you for your comments. I'm not sure that I can do that. Am I, yeah, that's not something I'm authorized to do, especially when we still have other speakers.
Through the chair, we don't have seating abilities in our rules, so
Okay, so I'm not really authorized to be able to cede time to another speaker, especially a previous speaker. So thank you, though. First Zoom speaker.
Chair Williams, our first speaker via Zoom is Rayanne. Rayanne, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Chair Williams. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. I wanted to start by noting that staff noted that this project and the applicant noted that this project is not dissimilar from other projects that have occurred in this neighborhood in terms of floor area ratio, architectural design principles, et cetera. So it does raise the question to me as to why there has been such opposition by residents of a predominantly white neighborhood, fighting so vigorously for a project being developed by a family, one of the few Black families with property in the Baywood neighborhood. As a Brown person who was born in San Mateo and lived close to the Baywood neighborhood for most of my life and experienced racism and race-based bullying as a child, I think that we need to reckon with the ways that our communities are set up and the racial segregation of those communities, which is something that I would hope we would not try to preserve in historic amber, as has consistently been done by historic preservation efforts in other areas of the state and the country. I welcome the Alston family to San Mateo and encourage approval of this project, and I think that no one should have to experience the kind of tenuous, year-long process for a teardown and addition of an ADU with a single-family home. And I would note that all the staff time and effort that has been placed in this project at the best of the Neighborhood Association, which spent a significant amount of time over the past year on this project, that that staff time could be used in other ways to help develop a bicycle, pedestrian, infrastructure, and do the necessary planning. So I see a policy issue here where we are allowing this kind of mistreatment of a Black family trying to move into the neighborhood and, at the same time, cutting against the strained resources at the staff level that we already have to do other projects.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next speaker, Ashley.
Chair Williams, our next speaker via Zoom is Evan Adams. Evan, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chair. On the question of the public record and rules, there may have been a number of meetings on this project, both as stated in the staff report and in public comments. Careful consideration should be paid to not run afoul of the HAA and SB 330 rules. As a matter of morality, homes and especially ADUs should not take years to start, let alone build and complete. As stated in the packet, this project is partially being built to house elderly parents. It has been 14 months in preconstruction. It will take years from now to complete. It is important to house our elderly parents promptly. Their time with us is finite and precious. Out of respect for our elders, it is cruel to not welcome them to our neighborhoods openly and quickly. On a matter of design, I presume I see gas, not wood-burning fireplaces on the plans, but I do see tall chimneys. I also see a gas poolside fire pit. I'd like to see any rebuild of a modern home on this scale to consider our environment and consider eliminating such ornamental gas uses, also allowing a lower total chimney height. As the ADU is a new unit, clear numbering, signage, and a pathway access should be secured for future residents. On the matter of historic preservation, I provide you this adage: If everything is historic, then nothing is historic. Consider Pasadena. Ask HCD if all of Pasadena is historic. The Carol Anne's Historic, the Lili Historic, St. Matthew's Historic, an overly broad application of historic significance is a slippery slope. Finally, the comments tonight have a number of historical claims of the area and the houses. Those redacted addresses should be kept in the record for future historic preservation, should the city council choose to act on such.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Who is our next speaker, Ashley?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Rafa Sonnenfeld. Rafa, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. I'm calling in on behalf of YIMBY Law. We're a nonprofit housing advocacy organization, and we support this project. We submitted a letter in support of this project. We enforce state housing laws, including the Housing Accountability Act. And I think it's noted pretty clearly in the staff report that this project meets all the requirements to be covered by the Housing Accountability Act. It meets all of the objective standards of the zoning and general plan. And the reason why we have a Housing Accountability Act is because when projects meet all of those objective standards, they are required to be approved. So that's what the law requires of you this evening, and we expect that you'll approve this project. You know, it's really unfortunate that homeowners who are building a project for literally their family and an ADU, a mother-in-law unit, literally for their mother-in-law, need to resort to hiring attorneys and looking at all of the laws in order just to build a simple, traditional home that meets all the requirements under the law. And that's what they've done. They've followed all the rules. They've followed all the rules. And when folks follow all the rules, they should have their homes approved. So with that, I just hope that you all follow the law. We don't want to have to file litigation in this matter, but that's something that we consider. So thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Richard Hedges. Richard, you can go ahead and unmeet yourself.
Thank you very much. This is a very interesting meeting tonight. I just want to say I think Baywood is a beautiful neighborhood. If I could afford to live there, I would. I've been a resident of San Mateo 52 years. I have many friends in Baywood and pass by homes all the time. There are many homes in Baywood that don't comply with what's being required tonight as a traditional home in Baywood. I would tell you that I understand why people are concerned about changes. Changes are always a little frightening. I understand why people won't want construction going on near their home. I live in the newest community in San Mateo, and I was one of the first to move in, so I've been through years of construction and understand some of the disruptions. None of that placates the reason to deny this home being built. I want to say I have admiration, the highest amount, for someone that would go out of their way to build a residence for an elderly mother. The important people in our lives are all family. We take care of our elderly people in my family, and we also take care of the children. So my hat's off to this family. I understand that they're moving to San Mateo, and I'm happy that they've chosen the same city I have. I couldn't be dislodged from here, I don't think, under any circumstances. But I will say that they're also creating jobs and also creating a higher worth of the houses around them. Anytime you put in a new building, especially with more square footage, it raises the sale price and raises the comps in the neighborhood. So I think in the long run, anyone having to leave this neighborhood, beautiful neighborhood, and selling their home will actually see an advantage for this home being built. Thank you for letting me speak, and I don't always envy your position in having to make these decisions. Good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Alexandra Melendez. Alexandra, you can go ahead and unmeet yourself.
Good evening, San Mateo Planning Commission. My name is Alexandra Melendez. I'm the organizing manager for Peninsula for Everyone. I'm not going to lie, I'm really trying to, like, contain myself here. I rarely go into public comments visibly upset, but I'm going to be kind of blunt in this meeting. Why is the Neighborhood Association and the neighbors around this home stalling for a project for this long? This is a classic example of historical review gone wrong. Why is the Baywood Neighborhood Association claiming that the community, that this particular home is excessively subject to historical review? To highlight one of the other comments in opposition earlier, they talk about, they were talking about pre-war homes and how everybody desires pre-war homes and the need to be able to preserve those. I want to highlight the history of pre-war San Mateo, as noted in books like The Color of Law and a particular New York Times article on August 14th of 2020, where Richard Rothstein highlights the historical exclusion well documented in the city of San Mateo. That's what pre-war homes were. What history are the neighbors and the Neighborhood Association of Baywood trying to preserve I have been really disappointed by some of the comments that come out here, especially given the fact that the applicant is a, of a mixed race, they are a mixed-race Black family. I just would implore people to read the public comment packet. It took me over an hour to just see some of the comments. These neighbors should be welcomed by their community, and they have a right to do whatever they want on their property within the letter of the law. I am asking the Planning Commission to approve this project and ask the neighborhood to spend their energy welcoming the new community members that are being added, that are adding to the character of their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. All right, who do we have next, Ashley?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Max Motner. Max, you can go ahead and unmeet yourself.
Hello, Planning Commission. I'm Max Motner. I'm a resident of North Central. I live about a mile from this location. I am extremely enthusiastic about this project. I think it's amazing that a family wants to invest an incredible amount of money into our community. I think it's a no-brainer that we should welcome them with open arms, welcome anyone who wants to build a house and move to our community and spend a lot of money doing so. I hope to someday have that level of wealth and move to the Baywood neighborhood and not face the type of vitriol and confrontation and criticisms about design choices that if ultimately people really didn't want this to happen, they can buy the property. So I encourage, like previous speakers, that you allow this to go forward. Like others have mentioned, I don't want our city fighting legal battles and taking on legal liability and fighting these kinds of cases, so I'll leave it there and encourage you guys to approve this plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Justin Alley. Justin, you can go ahead and unmeet yourself.
Hello, Commissioners and staff. I'm Justin Alley, a resident and a member of One San Mateo. I'm speaking up today in favor of the applicants at 415 Fairfax being able to promptly proceed with their plans. I've carefully looked at the application materials. I've also looked at the site. And having lived in the city for most of my life, I have an intimate familiarity with the neighborhood in which the site sits. I fully concur with the staff's professional analysis that these plans meet all objective and legal standards for proceeding without any further undue impediment. Likewise, I am familiar with a number of other previous projects in Baywood which bear many similarities to this project and which faced no pushback comparable to what this project has strangely received. I will not speculate as to the individual motives of those who have come out in opposition to this one housing project. However, taking the intensity of the opposition in the aggregate and seeing that there are absolutely no objective or even frankly understandable reasons for such fierce opposition, I am left with the distinct impression that exclusionary behavior of the most lamentable kind is afoot. All of that said, I want to affirm that as a resident with deep roots in this community, I believe that the sort of opposition we have seen to this one development represents only a narrow minority, albeit a powerful and vocal one, and that many of my neighbors would joyfully welcome and cheer a family being able to achieve their housing dream in our community. Finally, I will just point out the obvious once more. Baywood is not an officially recognized historic neighborhood. Saying it is so doesn't make it so, and the continued straining to abuse historical protection standards for general anti-housing ends just cannot be allowed to fly. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to ask you before that. How many more speakers are there after?
Chair Williams, we currently have three more speakers via Zoom.
Okay. If it's okay, we may take a break after the speakers before we do our comments. Okay.
All right. Jordan Grimes, you can go ahead and unmeet yourself.
Good evening, Staff and Commissioners. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a 19th Avenue Park resident, lifelong resident of the city, as well as a lead member of housing advocacy group, Peninsula for Everyone. I will keep my comments brief. The existing home isn't historic by any stretch of the imagination. The replacement home complies with the city's objective guidelines, is compliant with and protected by state housing law, and should, as such, be approved. It's really as simple as that. Two other quick points that I'd like to make. The Baywood neighborhood, like many other San Mateo neighborhoods, is lovely. It is not, however, historic, nor are the homes contained within it. Indeed, the only remarkable attribute of any real significance with regard to the neighborhood is the considerable affluence and racial segregation found there. Census tract data shows that Baywood is 71% white with a median household income of more than $250,000. The second is of a more personal nature. Reading through the public comment packet, as well as hearing some of the comments tonight, has made me embarrassed to be a San Matean. This commentary does not represent, I believe, our values as a city. The ordeal that nearby neighbors have put the Alstons through is shameful and shows us exactly why state housing law is so necessary to end exclusionary policy outcomes. I look forward to the swift approval of the project and welcoming the Alstons and their family to the city. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. So the next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, the next speaker is Peter Mandel. Peter, you can go ahead and unmeet yourself.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. My name is Peter Mandel. I live at 478 Fairfax Avenue, just about five or six houses away from the applicant. I've lived in this home with my family for 36 years. I attended the initial public meeting, expressed and concurred with the objections that were expressed at that time, kind of amused with the architect's response to whether there had been changes to the design to respond to the community's concerns. They seemed pretty minor, millions in paint, is what I heard. I don't want to waste your time, but I want to concur with the other people who objected to this home, primarily because of its size. As one of the other speakers said, it was a pretty clever design to get within one square foot for the maximum allowable. It's legal, but is it right? That was the end of my intended comments, but I'm getting kind of upset about these comments indicating or claiming that the neighborhood is racial, exclusionary. That's absolutely not true in any way. We would welcome the family. It's the design of the house and the size of the house that we object to. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, we appreciate your comments. And who is the next speaker?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Karen Vitale. Karen, you can go ahead and unmeet yourself.
Yes, hi. I'd like to first express grave concern over the implication that those of us who live in the Baywood neighborhood are somehow elitist and making these comments because of racial bias. That has nothing to do with it, and I think the fact that this has been recast as racism is just horrific. What has happened here? The family is welcome to move into the existing structure, remodel it, and preserve a beautiful neighborhood home. We are opposed to this because what contributes to the character of this neighborhood are the trees, the people, and the homes, and tearing down these pre-war homes is terrible. There's a false equivalency being made that non-opposition to some of the other projects constitutes that we're targeting this one. The other projects have been largely worked on post-war homes, not these older 1920s, 1930s homes. And so, you know, those homes have nothing to do with what's going on here. The problem is the character of the neighborhood is being stripped. Certainly, there must be a way that smart people can remodel this home, attach an ADU to it for their aging parents, and not compromise the character of the neighborhood. What's being built does not fit. It is too large. The Inspiration homes look like McMansions from God knows where, but not from our neighborhood. And I have one of the larger neighborhoods, one of the larger homes in the neighborhood, but it fits in with the character of this, and we, as a longtime resident of Baywood, have done everything we can to preserve that character, as has almost every single person in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So we have another speaker or two?
Yes, Chair Williams, we have one more speaker via Zoom.
Okay.
Our next speaker via Zoom is Mark Kowano. Mark, can you go ahead and unmeet yourself?
So I'm a homeowner in the Baywood neighborhood, and I've been a resident here for about 10 years now. And I want to speak out in favor of this project at 415 Fairfax. This project is legal, and while I was not prepared to speak today and certainly won't be as eloquent as previous speakers that pointed out how these, those opposed to this project are in support of policies that provide systematic racism, I do just want to say that that is my opinion. I love this neighborhood, and I want to be another voice that is in support of this 415 Fairfax project to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, are there any other speakers? I think there's another person in the audience that would like to speak.
Good evening.
Okay, I didn't know if you needed to, like, get her name or anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I was going to give you my name and I'll fill out something, but please, without the time moving. My name is Maxine Turner. I was not going to speak, but this meeting has gone so sideways, it's hard not to. First of all, I would like to point out that staff did not accurately answer the question, which is why Keith, who was in the room where it happened, was able to bring something to your attention that you would not have had, and I really think it was unfortunate that that was taken out of his time. I'd like to make a few points. You are missing critical information about historic, the historic value of this neighborhood being a historic district, and this is protected by both state and federal law. So the people who think this is in accordance with all the laws are totally missing the point. You don't know because the right questions haven't been answered by staff. The applicant says that he's a good neighbor, and I think the neighborhood are good neighbors. I don't live in this neighborhood, but I can read and see, and I don't see where this applicant has compromised on anything. He is jamming too much of what he wants onto a fairly small lot, which all of our existing lots in San Mateo are, and he is impacting negatively a lot of the neighbors and perhaps a greater district, which we do not know about yet. It is classic individual rights versus community values, and you've got a real tough decision, but not so tough because you need more information. You are not asking for anything infeasible that would conflict with this HAA. It's obvious he had the wrong architect, and there are many examples of speakers that have pointed out where they could get what they want within the existing framework of the house. The unique architectural history is the issue, and the city should continue this meeting with your architect consultants and tree consultants in-house.
Thank you.
You need more information. Please postpone the meeting until you get it.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, are there any other speakers present? I think we do have another speaker. One more, and hopefully that's it.
Sorry to be one more speaker at an already long meeting, but I wanted to say that I'm Neil Tandowski. I live at 253 Harvard Road, which is a couple of doors down from the Alston home. And I just want to say two things quickly, and one is that if I felt that this was a race issue, I would probably put my house on the market tomorrow. I mean, this is a lovely family that's moving into the neighborhood from everything that I know and I think the neighbors know, and this is a, I liken this to a business issue and just a discussion about wanting to do the right thing, whatever side of the equation one falls. And so I'm really, I'm at a loss and I'm embarrassed by the insinuations that have been made in this meeting, that anybody who believes something different about this project is implying that there are racial factors involved. And I mean that sincerely, and I would hate to think that they're having to deal with this at this particular time. The other thing I just wanted to say is I wanted to just say that I agree with, there was a word used tonight about the ADU piece of it and that it's a loophole. We know that in the state of California, there's a lot of promotion for additional housing, and I think it is a loophole, not what they're trying to do necessarily with this property, but just in general, and I think as And I think as we're making decisions on future projects that have ADUs, I think that word loophole should be considered, because we need more housing in the state, and the way that we're going to go about it is either going to be helpful or not. So, I thank you for listening.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, so, Ashley, I want to check with you one more time to see if there are any other speakers online.
Chair Williams, there are no more speakers online.
Okay. So, I understand that you would like to have a chance to provide rebuttal. Is that correct? No? I got a message from, that there's an opportunity now for staff to, or the applicant, I'm very sorry, I misread the message. Would the applicant like to provide a rebuttal to the public comments at this time?
Yes, if I just have a couple of minutes, that would be terrific.
Yeah, Eric, I just want to address, like, maybe two things, and then I'll hand it over to you.
Great.
Number one, you know, I think there's a lot of questions about ADU, and, you know, whether we're going to use ADU for, like, rent or whatever. Clearly, our mother-in-law is here tonight. This is a family that has a son in college, a mother-in-law, I've got an elderly parent. It's really important to us to have a home that accommodates our family, our entire family. And so, you know, that's what need we're trying to meet with this. You know, I hope we can come to this neighborhood and feel welcome. I know that we have plenty of friends here, and we do feel that, for many. It's been frustrating to go through this and feel like we're the only family that is, and I'll just kind of point that out. But Eric, I'll yield to you.
Okay, and then I'll yield briefly to Lee Prince at the end. But just quickly, just responding to Jeff Kotowitz's 411 right next door, I mean, I'm sorry that he feels like he was somehow duped, or he felt like our numbers were somehow misconstrued or construed inappropriately. The reality is, the reason we didn't add the ADU to the number of, to our house was because we have to compare apples to apples, and the ADU is a right given to everybody in California now, and everybody on that list could actually had an ADU, at which point we'd be adding six to seven to eight hundred square feet to everybody's home. So, in an effort to be apples to apples, we kept that ADU off, because not all the homes have ADUs. That was at one point. And then, for Steve McKay, I mean, it was really a response that Jean just gave as well, is that this is, the ADU is for a family member, and she's in there. We did study, and I know you're the neighbor at the rear, we did study actually taking the ADU and putting it in that far corner, four feet from one side setback and four feet from the rear, and creating a breezeway between the two, but it just seemed more insensitive. We're trying to be insensitive with good, but I would put it four feet from your property. You mentioned how tough this would be already for you, so we tried to keep that away, and we're 13 to 15 feet away from your property line. We thought that would be a good thing. And I'll just piggyback on Roth Sonnenfeld's comment about, you know, these are rules that have been set in place, and we're following the rules, and just to piggyback on his comment and saying, there is a way, there's a process in our government to make changes to those rules. It takes some effort, it takes some cohesion of neighbors, of a group of people, but it does, it can happen, it has happened in the past. So, if there are enough people that are upset about this process, there is a way to pursue a change, and that's all that I would recommend. I mean, we're service providers, we follow the letter of the rules, and are, more important, our clients' desires, but there is a way to change it if there's a desire. So, with that, I will turn it over to Lee Prince. Go ahead, Lee, thanks.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Lee Prince. I am a land use attorney. I did want to respond to a couple of the speakers who mentioned the California Environmental Quality Act. CECL requires an EIR for a historic resource. CECL's focus is on whether or not the home itself is a historic resource. There is no evidence in the record that the existing home itself is a historic resource, not even in the neighbors' report. At best, it is a potential contributor to a potential historic district, and this is not the legal standard. Thus, there is no basis for further CECL review. And I also want to point out that in light of SB 330, even if the city were to decide to go through a process to move a historic district forward in this area, which it has not yet been willing to do, it would not apply to this application or its home, or this home, which is itself not a historic resource. So, I just want to thank you for your time and point that out. I could answer any other questions.
All right, thank you. No other comments in rebuttal from any of the members of the applicant group, then I think we can close the public comment period at this time. Okay, with that, I think that we'll take a couple minutes break, and what time do we have? 9:14, so, you know, just 9:20, yeah, okay. If everyone doesn't mind, we'll just be right back.
Turn my mic off. Okay, if everyone can take their seats, please. Teamwork. That was John using the gavel. I just asked everyone to take their seats and he decided to use the gavel. That's what you're in for when he's next. Okay. I don't even know. I have all these notes here. Okay. All right, so at this time, we've closed the public comment period. And we are ready to turn it over to the planning commissioners for deliberations. So is there anything that staff would like to have on screen? Our screens are still in and out. Kind of strange, but we can turn around and look if you wanted to put anything on screen for us. Like your, I think there was a slide that had the request.
Sure, through the chair, this evening, the staff is recommending, requesting your recommendations. So we could put that on the screen. There's no specific discussion topics.
Yeah, that's what I meant. If you could put that on, that slide on, that would be helpful. I'll give them a minute to find that, I guess. And then Commissioner Patel, I'll start with you and we'll go this way.
Great. Thank you. I guess I'll start by discussing the findings and, you know, I thank you to the staff for answering all the questions about the state laws that are in play. And I think it's pretty clear cut that this project, I mean, the project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act, and thus, the city cannot deny or reduce or render the project infeasible if objective standards are met. And I agree, I read through all of the single-family home design guidelines. I read through every single piece of material I could get my hands on. And I agree that the objective design standards have been met. And so legally, we cannot deny this project, in my opinion. It meets all of the objective guidelines, including height limits, FAR limits, setbacks, et cetera. As another commenter had previously stated, it has the potential to be a historic contributor in a neighborhood that has the potential to be a historic neighborhood. But as of today, the neighborhood has not been declared historic through one of the two avenues that staff discussed to do so. And so I don't, I don't think that it can be denied because of that reason. And as, as the council pointed out, an SB 330 application has been filed, which effectively locks in the zoning and the guidelines and the rules at the time of the application. So even if we go through the process to, to declare the neighborhood historic, this, this project would not be subject to those rules. So for, for those reasons, I believe that we are legally obligated to approve this project. I think all of us on the planning commission, I think the city council are all aware of our legal obligations under the Housing Accountability Act, especially since very recently, the city paid quite a hefty fine because it had been violated on a different project. And so I personally don't have the appetite to expose the city to legal liability. And I would be very surprised if other elected bodies had that appetite as well. When it comes to the heritage tree, I read our protected tree ordinance. I read the accompanying administrative guidelines. There's a lot in there that is left to the discretion of the city's managing arborist. I, I agree with the city on the condition of approval number nine, which requires the tree to be preserved, but offers a process that the candidate could, the applicant could go through to pursue removal at the discretion of the city arborist. It's the city arborist's job to ensure that these heritage trees are preserved. And I don't want to presume to what details might be uncovered through the excavation, exploration that has been discussed in the report or as the construction design details are developed. So I would trust the managing arborist to make a decision as that information is revealed that is best for the tree and is best for the community in preserving the heritage trees. So those are, those are, those are my opinions on the findings. But I did want to talk about the unusual amount of opposition on this project. And as with every project that comes before the planning commission, I carefully read each and every public comment to try to understand the concerns and to think about what could be done to mitigate those concerns within the limits of the laws that we must follow. And so I did, I did a very similar analysis as the applicant. I, I looked at the public comments. I tried to understand the physical context of the neighborhood. And so I cross-referenced the public comments to property records to try to understand what, what is the physical context, what is happening in the neighborhood. So the neighborhood is zoned R1B, which has a floor area ratio limit of 37%. One of the commenters noted that they felt it was a little bit disingenuous to exclude the ADU from the floor area ratio calculation. So when you add the ADU in, the FAR increases to about 45%. So there were 28 commenters who have expressed concerns about the size of the mass of project. Nineteen of these 28 commenters own properties in the neighborhood that exceed the 37% FAR limit of the zone. Five of the commenters actually have a FAR that is bigger than the proposed project, with two of the commenters tying for the largest FAR at 54%. So a lot of, a lot of commenters who have larger FARs have expressed opinions that they think the project is too large for the lot size. And that's just something I found a little bit interesting and a little bit confusing. In terms of appearance, there were 42 commenters expressing opposition to the transitional architectural style of the proposed project. And 13 of these commenters live in or own properties that have an architectural style that's very similar. I'm personally very sympathetic to some of this sadness about the loss of a Spanish Revival home. I love old homes with original details. I particularly love Spanish Revival homes. My own home is a 1929 Spanish Revival, which I intentionally sought out because I love those homes so much. And, you know, I'm, for, for three years, my husband has been trying to convince me to replace the windows and I won't do it because it's really hard to get true divided light windows with OG lugs that aren't a fortune. And so I'm willing to suffer with the very leaky windows because I don't want to remove any period details from the home. My neighbors across the street last week painted their Spanish Revival blue and removed the clay tile roof and replaced it with asphalt shingles. And I spent the entire morning looking out the window doing this. I hope they're not watching this. And so I get it, I really do. I love old homes. But I think, again, we are obligated to follow the laws that are in place. And because the neighborhood is not currently declared historic and the home did not meet any of the four criteria to make it eligible for a listing in the California Register of Historical Resources, you know, I just don't think there's anything I can do, similarly, there's nothing I can do about my neighbors' paint choices, as much as it might pain me. But taking a step back, looking at some of the public comments in light of the physical context of the neighborhood, I, I found the situation confusing. I found the amount of opposition confusing, especially when I learned tonight that there were three other homes that were completely torn down and rebuilt and did not get opposition to the level of having to come before the planning commission. There was, one of the comments was a letter from the architect. And he stated, "The rules and guidelines provide for new residents to have the same rights as anyone else in San Mateo, to build within a prescribed envelope instead of rules. We are simply asking for the same opportunity." And so I agree with that statement that the applicant should have the same opportunity to build to the same FAR and the same architectural style that already exists in the neighborhood. I'm, I'm not sure, like I said, I'm kind of confused about the nature of the comments in relation to the, the, the physical context of the neighborhood. It seems like a lot of the comments that we got were in response to an email that was sent out to the neighbors, trying to raise awareness of the project and trying to coordinate how those concerns, how concerns about the project will be raised. And when I looked at that email, because many people included it in their response, that email did not have any factual data about the proposed project, such as the square footage, or the lot size, or the floor area ratio, or, you know, the number of neighboring properties or other properties in the neighborhood that are of a similar style. But it did include a lot of subjective statements about what neighbors had said at this neighborhood meeting, you know, including like, "The new house would be massive, about 70% bigger than homes in the neighborhood," or "The house will be too close to side and back property lines." But again, no data or references cited to back these claims. And I also saw that there were a lot of emails that were forwarded by the president of the Baywood Neighborhood Association. And, and I wonder if what happened here is that this email got sent out, did not have specific information, it did not have context about the rest of the neighborhood. And a lot of people got alarmed and, and wrote in response. And it's not unusual for a resident or a leader of a neighborhood to kind of issue a call to action. I think we've seen that on every single residential project that has come before us. But usually, when applicants come before us, as we learned from the data today, it's, it's a corporation, you know, usually a faceless corporation. And what's unusual in this situation is the applicant is a family. And, you know, there's a lot of, I think people are hesitant to address the elephant in the room, and I'm going to do it as the only brown person on this commission, which is that the applicant is a black family and they're trying to build their dream home in a neighborhood that, according to the latest census data, is 0.8% black, 30 residents out of a population of over 3,700. And reading the public comments, especially the ones questioning why this family wants to move into the neighborhood, wow, like, I can empathize with how difficult that must have been for you. So a little bit about me, I grew up in a small town in Florida. My family was one of two Indian families in the entire town. I was the only Indian kid at my schools. My father was an officer in the Navy for 35 years, and I've never met another Indian family in the military community. It was a very isolating experience. Other people, Alex Melendez, who commented, mentioned, or maybe it was Ryan Modashemi, mentioned growing up in San Mateo and experiencing bullying. That happened to me. People made fun of my culture. I saw my military father have humiliating interactions with Customs and Border Patrol. I know I'm getting really personal, but I'm saying all of this to try and explain that these experiences are really common for minorities. And that we are the product of our life experiences, how we interpret, how we process, what we're going through in the present is influenced and compounded by our past experiences. And repeated experiences of being made to feel excluded or being made to feel othered can wear on you. Each new experience is harder than the one before. And so having had those personal experiences myself and then seeing this situation from kind of the end zone, I wish that this had been approached with a little bit more sensitivity by the local leaders in the neighborhood. Especially noting that other projects have not received this kind of opposition. I understand there's more projects in the pipeline. One of the public comments mentioned that there's maybe three or four new projects that are coming before the city. And so I would just really encourage the local neighborhood, the local leaders, that as you elevate any concerns you might have about those projects, just pause for a minute and remember there's families behind these projects, families who may have a different, but no less valid way of living instead of priorities and opinions and desires. And start from a place of assuming good intentions and, and just be careful to make sure that the information you're operating from is accurate and so that there's not a question of why these concerns are being raised. One of the public comments I read mentioned at the neighborhood meeting, one of the owners said, "We don't want to live where we're not wanted." And I just want to repeat what some of the public commenters and say that I'm really sorry you were made to feel that way. You're absolutely wanted in this community. Your amazing family, your expertise, your community service, all of the work that you've done, you know, planning events for your neighborhood, these are all things that are going to be a huge asset to the city of San Mateo. And I'm so happy that you are trying to come back. And I hope this process has not tainted your opinion of our city or of this neighborhood. And I hope if, if you're granted the special use permit tonight, you don't feel any doubt about whether you belong here and any hesitation in proceeding. So that all said, that was a lot. I also want to raise some concerns about this process now, sitting here in the end zone. And I know we can't discuss this tonight, it's not agendized, but perhaps staff can figure out what might be the right venue for us to discuss this in the future. So I, like other public commenters have mentioned, have pretty serious concerns that our discretionary review process may not be compliant with AB 686, which is affirmatively furthering fair housing, which, for those not familiar, is a law that requires cities to overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities. So I'll give another personal example. In Indian culture and many other Asian cultures, multi-generational households are the norm. My grandparents lived with us when I was a kid. I'm planning to build an ADU, so my parents can do the same. And I would have never purchased a home in an area where ADUs were subject to discretionary approval, because I wouldn't want to spend 18 months and a lot of money and a lot of emotional energy trying to get approval, only to fail because people are strongly opposed to having ADUs in their neighborhood. Even if there is absolutely zero racial bias behind opposition to ADUs, the practical effect is that we discourage entire demographic groups that prioritize multi-generational and multifamily living from moving into the neighborhood. So the practical effect isn't entrench patterns of segregation. There were six people who made public comments about this project that questioned Alston's motivation for building an attached ADU, suggesting it was all actually a ruse to build a bigger single-family home. One of them said, "We also question, due to the location of its entrance, whether the proposed ADU will ever function as an independent dwelling. Who would wish to live in an ADU that requires them to walk past the owner's living room window and swimming pool? Our concern is that the wall separating the ADU and primary dwelling will be modified to allow for a future passageway and expansion of the home without the owners needing to obtain a permit." These were the comments that I read that sort of stopped me in my tracks, because they made me realize that something that was such a normal part of my culture and upbringing was so foreign to other people that their natural conclusion was that the whole ADU must be a scam to make a bigger single-family home. And the assumption that the desire for the ADU is a scam, or the assumption that it's not a valid use because it's just for family uses, or, you know, claiming, as another resident did, that people want to buy single-family homes, not multifamily homes, to me indicates a lack of exposure to cultures that value multifamily housing. And, you know, these, these community values, these norms, including the desire for preservation, aesthetic preferences, you know, what is a contributor, these are all opinions and norms that are established as a group over time. And as other public commenters noted, the sad history of our city is that not everyone has always been allowed to live in every part of it. An ad for the Baywood Neighborhood that appeared in the San Mateo Times in 1926 advertised proper restrictions to safeguard your investment. And although it has since been removed, thanks to state laws that allow us to do so, there is a reference in the title to this property, 415 Fairfax, to covenants, conditions, and restrictions that were put in place on this property in 1936, noting that those restrictions have now been omitted. So for a long time, almost seven decades, minorities were excluded from living in neighborhoods like this in San Mateo and didn't have a seat at the table when these community values, norms were established. You know, it wasn't until 1968, which was when they had the passage of the Fair Housing Act, that banned racially restrictive covenants, that Asians theoretically had the opportunity to live in this neighborhood with extended families and model what multifamily living looks like, demonstrating how it creates a richer, more vibrant community with a stronger safety net. But every year that goes by, property values increase, a widening racial wealth gap makes it less and less likely that minorities can actually live here. So as we look to our future, as we're developing our SB 9 ordinance, as we're developing our housing elements policies and programs, I think we need to take a really close look at discretionary review and discuss how it might be entrenching patterns of segregation and consider replacing discretionary review with something like form-based codes, which is, I know, something we've talked about in the past. All right, that was concern number one. Concern number two, last one. Communication about state laws. So I also think there's a huge opportunity to improve when and how we communicate information about relevant state laws that affect a project, both to applicants and to interested parties. So right now, when a neighborhood notice is issued, it only includes information about the project, like its location, the square footage, the number of units, information about how to submit comments. And in the year-plus I've spent on the planning commission, I've seen the same pattern over and over again, which is a neighborhood notice is mailed out, within 24 hours, someone has posted it to Nextdoor, hundreds of people comment, encouraging each other to organize and opposition and defeat the project. And it's not until they actually come to the planning commission meeting and they hear the staff presentation, that they hear about this thing called the Housing Accountability Act and learn that multi-unit projects, where more than two-thirds of the use is residential, cannot legally be denied, as long as they comply with objective design guidelines. And I can only imagine how frustrating this is to residents who spend a lot of time, like these residents did today, organizing to elevate their concerns, only to later learn, after all of that effort, that there are these laws in place that really can't affect any change. So when, I mean, imagine it feels like the planning commission isn't listening to you, the staff isn't listening to you, the city council might not be listening to you, when, when what's happening is like, we're, we can only operate within the bounds of these laws. So I think when applicable, we should include information about the Housing Crisis Act, that's SB 330, or the Housing Accountability Act in the neighborhood notice to set realistic expectations as early as possible about what the city and what the planning commission and what the city council can and cannot do, and where residents can, you know, affect change. And then I also think we should be providing information about the HCA and HJA to applicants as early as possible, so applicants can clearly understand what their rights are under these laws and proceed with their projects accordingly. All right, that was it. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, address one comment that Commissioner Patel made, just on the ADU. I just wanted to clarify that the city did not, the department did not review the ADU under any discretionary process, because it is subject to ministerial review. The special use permit is tied to the demolition and the SFDVR is tied to the single-family home.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Okay, so we are going to go to Commissioner Wiggins.
Yes. Through the chair.
Yes, go right ahead with your comments.
First, thank you, Commissioner Patel, for sharing everything you did. And not to, not to build on that, because you covered a lot of really important points. I, when I reviewed this application, I, I really struggled to understand why it was in front of us. Because as I see it, the project is not really bigger than what else is in the neighborhood. It's not really, on, you know, on average, different architecturally. And as much as I love oak trees, it's a former landscape architect who's no longer licensed, the only thing I was really, in a sense, going back and forth on was, was the oak tree. And I like how staff framed condition number nine on that. But I, I feel, I have the distinct feeling like I've spent too much time in someone's backyard, looking at a project that I just, I can't help but saying, doesn't seem like it should have been before us. And I think Commissioner Patel spent a lot of time, in good faith, discussing particulars of a lot of the public comments. And I, I really couldn't find anything. And I really couldn't find anything so controversial as what I was reading in the letters. And so confusion is a feeling I had as well, in trying to understand what was going on. So, in a sense, I don't have very many comments, actually. This looks compliant, this looks straightforward to me. It looks to me like there's interest in this district becoming a historic district, and so there's processes that have been discussed tonight, and that could happen in the future. But for this project, I almost want to make a point of saying I don't have much to say about this project. And so I support staff's findings, so.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Commissioner Ebner.
Through the chair. I would like to first thank staff, the applicant, the architect, my fellow commissioners, and, most importantly, the public for your input tonight. It's always interesting to hear different sides, and it gets pretty passionate, and people have a lot of things at stake. And hearing your concerns bring all that to head. I have a couple of things that I would like to run by the architect and the applicant prior to looking at the conditions of approval. But if I were able to someday build my dream home, as the Alstons appear to be on the verge of, I would maximize my solar capacity, I would incorporate passive energy systems, I would eliminate the fireplaces on the interior and the exterior of the property, I would use a gray water system for irrigation and domestic use, I would use solar lights on the exterior, light tunnels on the interior, I would not have any grass, and I would have as much pervious ground cover as I could fit into the project. I wanted to look at some of the history of housing in San Mateo and what it has meant to people who have not had the same opportunities as others to participate as property owners, which, in our country, is quite a substantial, life-altering event for many people. The city of San Mateo is recently working on quite a few housing components in their general plan update. And in one of the public accessible documents, a statement that caught my eye and has been on my mind ever since I read it a month ago reads, "This history of segregation in the region is important not only to understand how residential settlement patterns came about, but, more importantly, to explain differences in housing opportunity among residents today. In sum, not all residents had the ability to build housing wealth or achieve economic opportunity. This historically unequal playing field, in part, determines why residents have different housing needs today. We do not have the time or energy this evening to delve into the socioeconomic problems that our exclusionary housing practices have cemented in our country. But that doesn't mean that we get to ignore them. As far as the project in front of us, I think the applicant has done us a great service by being courageous enough to entertain this type of project and to move forward through the adversity that has been thrown at this family. I have absolutely no comments against the architectural components. I do fully understand some of the concerns by the neighbors in massing. Some of the views will be different than what they had prior, but they're not so obtrusive to think that it's out of the norm for any built-out neighborhood in California. I think that the architect fits exceedingly well into this neighborhood. I don't look at the massing as having any negative impact. And quite frankly, I find the existing structure old, dilapidated, and past its time. So I wanted to say thank you to the Alstons for going into this neighborhood, looking at a vision that will work for your family, that will work for the neighborhood, and I can only hope that the neighbors will spend as much energy and time on welcoming you to their area as they did in questioning the design or the reasoning for you choosing that area. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Ebner. Okay, my comments are a few things. First, I want to just say that I think that, you know, it's a long night, and there's been, you know, sort of spanned the gamut here, but I think we can all benefit from this discussion. I mean, it might be uncomfortable, it might be not what we, well, maybe not, maybe what some people expected, maybe not what others expected. But I think this is an important discussion. I think, you know, I think we're, I mean, isn't this what we're supposed to be doing, to sort of, you know, mend fences and create equity? So, thank you for bringing these issues forward, so. I also want to move on and commend staff for addressing so many of the details in their report. I appreciate the specifics from the neighborhood comments that staff researched or investigated and were able to address, you know, comments regarding height and windows and, you know, I mean, all the components of the project. So, they were not ignored. And in fact, I want to reiterate that we receive many comments, you know, we get the packet with the comments, we get the comments, you know, coming in to us from staff. So, we spend a lot of time reading and, of course, obviously, listening tonight as well to all the public comments. I always gain a lot of insight in all directions from the speakers, and I can't say that enough, so. The other thing is that normally, and I kind of want to, I hope this will inform some people, that normally we don't see single-family residential projects. So, you know, if of every project, there's a set of conditions of approvals, I think it's very important that the conditions of approval, you know, address some of the comments and issues and concerns, particularly those of the adjacent neighbors. And, you know, in general, of the neighborhood, issues of construction, issues of landscaping, issues of the encroachment, and not exactly physical, but I mean, just the issues of encroachments that occur to people that live with construction in their neighborhood. So I really urge staff to provide a tight, cohesive, you know, detailed set of conditions of approval for all projects. It's how we assure that construction and the end project, you know, is not, meets the requirements and meets the needs of the neighborhoods. Okay, so, my comments about the project, though, I do want to say a few things about that. Let me just move my stuff around here. They're kind of two-part, or, I mean, they're sort of, I guess, you know, it's hard to separate the architectural components of this project from the, you know, the rest of it. So, I take a measured approach on the design-related components of a project, but I do see this as our role as planning commissioners. So, I also live in an old house. I live in a house from 1920, you know, a 102-year-old house. It's got some elements to it that, you know, provide it with character and the detail that I've tried to preserve in my own house. So to me, that's important, and I do see that as, you know, one of the things that makes San Mateo interesting and my neighborhood interesting, and all of it, you know, most of, all the neighborhoods of San Mateo interesting. In fact, you talk about windows, and I'm kind of a geek, I guess, but, you know, I have replaced the original windows in my house with like, some custom-made windows to match the Mullians that were historically, you know...
Can you send me the info?
I can. And, you know, I have a, I know of a stained glass artist that like recreated, you know, leaded glass windows in a particular place for me, so that they would match the original other ones in the house. So, you know, these are the details that are important in architecture. And, you know, whether it be bungalows or Spanish Revival homes or, you know, the tree-lined streets. So it's my, so, I guess, my, excuse me. It's my opinion that, I think that the architect could have, you know, taken a look at, they could have come up with a solution to renovate this nice old house, perhaps add on in some manner, modernize it, remodel it, add some of the amenities that are proposed to fill the backyard of the site, you know, there would still be a room left. I mean, it's a big site, I think it's 10,000 square feet, as I recall. So, it's my opinion that the architect could have, you know, approached it in that manner. But that is not what is before us. So, you know, my personal likes and dislikes are not what's really being discussed here. We're looking at whether or not this project should be allowed to be demolished and rebuilt. I do see this as a historic house. There's many cities that have no historic houses, like Foster City or Irvine in Southern California. They're brand-new houses, I mean, not brand-new, but, excuse me, only a few decades old. Nothing wrong with that, but that's not what San Mateo is. However, this is not a designated historic neighborhood, for whatever reason. That's what's before us as a planning commission. And this house is not, was deemed by the city's consultant to not be historically, not a historic house. So, although I don't necessarily agree with it, I'm basing it on that evaluation by an expert. So, unfortunately, that's where the protection ends. So I understand that it's not on the historic register, and so it's not subject to CEQA. It kind of pains me to say that, but that's the direction I have to go. I do think that the tree should not be removed. I think that the applicants and their architect and their landscape architect should work very hard to preserve that tree. I mean, I also have a historic, I mean, a giant heritage oak tree in my front yard. My dad was a landscape contractor, landscape gardener, and when we bought our house, like, I don't know, 30, 25, 30 years ago, whatever it was, it was actually a hedge. And I said to my dad, you know, "Hey, I would like to get rid of this scraggly hedge." And he looks at it, and he's like, "This isn't a hedge, this is an oak tree, there's a trunk." So he, for years, he came to my house with his clippers, like, he went everywhere, and he pruned that tree, and I have a giant live oak tree, California live oak tree. So, it's worth saving. We're losing some of California's oak woodlands every year to wildfire, and the wildfires continue. Maybe we don't have wildfires here in San Mateo, but they are throughout California. So our oak trees, we lose some every year, and the old ones are worth protecting. So, I don't, you know, I think there's still some question about that, but I feel like it's worth studying further. So I also had a quote here that, just as a reminder, this about, I guess this isn't particularly related, but I think that the ADU is affecting that oak tree, and it could be, it could be that the ADU could be, I know that there was a quick study of other locations of where the ADU could be, but the ADU could be slightly reduced, stepped back, that long facade of that side elevation could have some articulation and perhaps get a little more distance between that trunk of that tree. Maybe there's a way to reconfigure that a little bit in less, in a less boxy kind of design of the house. As a reminder, the State Agency, the HCD, Housing and Community Development, ADU Handbook states, I don't know why I'm so losing my voice here, that states, the handbook states, "Accessory dwelling units offer lower-cost housing to meet the needs of existing and future residents within existing neighborhoods while respecting architectural character." So between the architectural character and the tree, I think that it's important to understand that, you know, an ADU is supposed to fit in with the neighborhood and the character, and that tree is part of the neighborhood. So, I think that kind of covers all my notes, let me just make sure. I guess those were my two things that I felt strongly about. However, in the end, I'm not sure that I can deny this project based on the findings and the information presented to me. Okay, those are my comments. And it's a difficult project, but I hope that, I hope that the difficulty ends here in the construction, which is also difficult, well, not for everybody, but that it can get started soon. So at this point, I think this is the end of the plain commissioner comments, and I need to have a motion. So that's where we have on the screen, I guess I could just read it. Adopt a resolution to approve the special use permit and the single-family dwelling design review for construction of a single-family residence with an attached ADU.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the special use permit and the single-family dwelling design review for construction of a single-family residence with an attached ADU at 415 Fairfax Avenue, and accept the categorically exemption from the environmental review based on the findings for approval and subject to the conditions of approval.
Actually, I guess before we hear second, what I should have asked is, is there a way to add on some conditions, such as, I guess I...
There is, there is a condition for approval that requires that
And maybe I don't have...
That heritage tree to be preserved.
Yeah, okay.
So that was my concern, but it's in there. It's number nine.
Yes, thank you. All right, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Through the chair, I'd like to second Commissioner Patel's motion.
Okay, at that, let's take a vote, please.
Yes, Chair Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ebner.
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent is absent. Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
That is four zero, and the motion stands. All right, thank you. That's, with that, we can close this item and move on to final items. Thank you very much. Okay, before I lose my voice, now, I guess I wanted to see if there are any reports and announcements before we leave.
Yes, I have one report to the chair, so the next meeting will be on July 26. We are expecting three business items on that agenda, so it would be a heavy agenda. We have two business items, so two land use items, that are, one is a Planning Commission action on a special use permit, one would be a recommendation to city council on a privately-initiated zoning reclassification request, and then the third item would be a study session on a housing development project at the Fish Market site. So those are our three items for next meeting. We anticipate four commissioners, as I understand that Commissioner Wiggins will be out of town for that meeting. So if any other commissioners are planning other breaks or need to...
Are there, yeah, are there any other breaks? Are there, yeah, are there any other breaks or? Okay, thank you. Are there any other announcements from anyone else?
Through the chair. I know that we had spoke previously about moving study sessions to an earlier hour. If the agenda was full, is this an option that we'd look at on the 26th?
That would be at the commission's discretion, absolutely. I know that previously the commission had expressed an interest in starting at 7:00 PM, but given the heavy agenda next meeting, if the commission is open to that, we can certainly look at agendizing a special meeting at 5:30 or 6:00 for the study session and then doing the regular business items at the 7:00 PM time.
Do we need to decide that now?
Do we make that decision tonight?
Perhaps we should ask Commissioner Nugent if he's available at 6:00, since Commissioner Wiggins won't be here.
We can reach out separately to individual commissioners and check for availability before we post an agenda.
Yeah, I mean, it probably makes sense to start earlier, given the big agenda. All right, reach out to us by email, I guess, and we can finalize that. All right, if there are no other comments or announcements, then we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for saying the things that we can't...